Call the meeting to order for Wycomico County Council Legislative Session 2024-16 for July 16, 2024. Those that like standing during this in the Lord's Prayer and Pledge of Allegiance, please do.
Father.
Good morning. To the flag of the United States of America and to your republic which stands one nation under God and visible of liberty and justice.
Entertaining motion from council to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion is carried. Consent agenda passes unanimously. Good morning, Mr. Benson.
Morning. Mr. President, council members. Preliminary, the council has received a request that when legislative bills are introduced and there's a public hearing pending, that there be an explanation as to the purpose of the bill. So, just so the council understands, it will be a slight deviation this morning from normal practice. So, I'm going to try to provide an explanation. I would note that on each of the bills that we have before us today, that there are individuals who are listed, and should I not provide an explanation that they think is appropriate, perhaps they can come forward and supplement whatever I provide. The first bill is Legislative Bill Number 2024-04, which is a bill, the purpose of this bill is to authorize bonding in the amount of $10,250,000 for the benefit of the public. When the budget was approved, the council voted to fund the construction of the Fruitland Primary School, and the $10,250,000 is the portion of the funding that was agreed that would be bonded. So, that's what the purpose of this bill is, and I'm going to read this lengthy preliminary section. It's an act to authorize and empower Wycomico County, Maryland, to borrow on the faith and credit of Wycomico County, Maryland, an aggregate principal amount not exceeding $10,250,000, and evidence such borrowing by the issue and sale from time to time of one or more series of general obligation bonds with the county, the proceeds thereof to be used by Wycomico County to finance, refinance, or reimburse the costs of certain project for the Board of Education, including costs of planning, design, acquisition, construction, improvement, installation, renovation, rehabilitation, repairing, furnishing, and equipping of land, facilities, buildings, and structures, together with other costs and financing costs related there to, as further described herein, as applicable. Authorizing the issuance and sale from time to time of one or more series of general obligation refunding bonds in order to currently refund or advance refund any of the bonds issued pursuant to the authority of this act, providing that the aggregate principal amount of each such series of refunding bonds does not exceed 130% of the aggregate principal amount of bonds refunded therefrom, exempting all such bonds and refunding bonds from the provisions of Section 19205 in 1926, a local government article of the Antedote Code of Maryland. Authorizing the issuance and sale from time to time of one or more series of general obligation bond anticipation notes in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $10,250,000 prior to an anticipation of the sale of any of the bonds authorized hereby in order to finance, reimburse, finance, refinance, or reimburse costs of such project on an interim basis, capitalizing interest and financing costs. Authorizing the county councils of the past resolutions prior to issuing any and all are part of the bonds, refunding bonds or bond anticipation notes, in order to fix, prescribe, determine, or to provide for the details of such obligations and the issuance and sale thereof, providing that all such bonds, refunding bonds, and bond anticipation notes shall be general obligations of the county, to which the full faith and credit of the county are pledged, and authorizing annual appropriations to pay the principal and interest of and interest on said obligations, and a levying of taxes to meet said appropriations, subject to any lawful limitations on the county's taxing powers set forth in the charter, as that taxing power may relate to such obligations. Providing for the disbursement of the proceeds of the bonds, refunding bonds or bond anticipation notes authorized hereby, providing certain rules of construction, and the provisions of this act shall be liberally construed, providing that the provisions of this act shall be separable and generally relating to the issuance and sale of such bonds, refunding bonds, or bond anticipation notes authorized hereby. This is here for a public hearing, and Paul Wilber, County Attorney, and Pam Olin, Department Finance Director, are here, should the council have any questions with regard to the bill.
Thank you, Mr. Benson. This time, we open the floor for a public hearing on Legislative Bill 2024-04. If you have any comments that you'd like to make in reference to this specific bill, come to the podium, please. State your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. That concludes the public hearing on Legislative Bill 2024-04. Entertaining motion from council to approve Legislative Bill 2024-04. Is that moved? Second. Motion is second. Any discussion? We will do this by roll call. All those in favor, you'll state aye. Opposed? Nay. We'll begin with Councilman Holloway.
Aye.
Councilman Hastings.
Aye.
Councilwoman Shields.
Aye.
Councilman Baker.
Aye.
Vice President Merritt.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Legislative Bill 2024-04 passes unanimously. Mr. Benson.
Second item is Legislative Bill 2024-05. This is a bill, the state of Maryland has authorized the sale of cannabis in the state of Maryland. There are proceeds that are generated from the sale of the cannabis. A portion of those proceeds are dedicated to various counties, including Wycomico County, to be used to fund programs for low income and other items as identified by the Maryland Office of Social Equity. The purpose of this bill is to provide a mechanism within which the funding would be handled. It is a, in this bill, the county council is basically saying that the county local management board will be the board that administers, the funds will issue the criteria and make recommendations as to which programs should be funded, and those recommendations will come back to the county council, and the county council will fund based on those recommendations. Mr. Andrew Illuminati is here from the county attorney's office, should there be any questions. And Legislative Bill 2024-05 is an act to amend Chapter 29 of the Wycomico County Code titled Finance to Establish Article III Title Community Reinvestment and Repair Fund to Establish the Use and Distribution Process for Money Received from the Community Reinvestment and Repair Fund. It's here for a public hearing, and Mr. Illuminati is here. If Mr. Illuminati thinks my explanation needs to be supplemented, he might want to step forward and say so. Otherwise, that's what I understand the bill to be.
Thank you, Mr. Benson. At this time, we open the floor for a public hearing on Legislative Bill 2024-05. If you have any comments you'd like to make in reference to this bill, come to the podium, please. State your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. That concludes the public hearing on Legislative Bill 2024-05. Entertaining motion from council to approve Legislative Bill 2024-05. Second? Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor, we will determine by saying aye. Opposed? It would be nay. Councilman Holloway.
Aye.
Councilman Hastings.
Aye.
Councilwoman Shields.
Aye.
Councilman Baker.
Aye.
Vice President Merritt.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Legislative Bill 2024-05 passes unanimously. I think we have another one. Mr. Benson.
Legislative Bill 2024-06 is here for a public hearing. The purpose of this legislation is to add language to the county code, specifically Chapter 22 of the county code, that relates to any contracts, licenses, permits, leases that the county would enter into. This bill resulted or came about because of a contract relating to a road event that took place on county property that the county council was not aware of prior to the issuance or the agreement being entered into. And the purpose of this agreement is to attempt to address that and make sure that in any future situations that such proposals will be brought to the attention of the county council prior to the agreements being entered into. So, this is an act to amend Chapter 22 of the Wycomico County Code titled County Property, Section 22-1 titled County-Owned Property, to add a provision on the use of county-owned property, and it's here for a public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Benson. At this time, we open the floor for a public hearing on Legislative Bill 2024-06. If you have any comments you'd like to make, come to the podium, please. State your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. Right over there, that's where the camera's going to be.
Good morning. My name is Sue Jackson Stein, and I live in Wycomico Estates in Salisbury, a county place. I want to personally thank Councilman Holloway for shepherding Council Bill 2024-6 to protect Connolly Mill Park, and hopefully in the future, ensure that other such green spaces are protected. Use of these 180 acres of land, including a 22-acre lake, was determined by Wycomico Natural Resources and Parks and Tourism, and they were envisioned to have nature trails and other low-impact amenities for all the citizens to use. It is my understanding that the use of this land must be approved by the entire county council, as per Chapter 22 of Wycomico County Code. Safari in the quarry did not have such approval. Despite citizens' objections and questionable legality, the county executive allowed LiveWire to stage this event with another one to follow. As development continues in the county, green and open areas will become more important, both aesthetically and environmentally. The wetlands, wildlife, waterway, and natural beauty must be preserved. I thank you all again for attempting to protect Connolly Mill Park, and I hope you will enact more stringent legislation to protect and codify the uses and enforcement of public spaces. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Any other public comments?
Good morning. Mikel Dahlien, Wycomico County. I'm going to be very brief now, because I'll have some more comments, that public comment, but I wanted to echo the previous speaker and, you know, really thank you for what you said, and also, thank you, Mr. Joe Holloway, for bringing this up. Thank you for the entire council, for, you know, seeing the seriousness of this issue and seeing how it affects, you know, multiple areas of, you know, people from Wycomico County. It affects the environment, it affects the quality of life. You guys saw it, you took action, and I thank you. I'll have more to say later, but thanks for now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is James Dahlien. I live in Wycomico County. Just like to reiterate what Mikel just spoke about and say, we support this, we'd like you guys to support it, and thank you, Mr. Holloway, and the rest of the council.
You. Other public comments? Seeing none, that concludes public comments on Legislative Bill 2024-06. Entertaining motion from council to approve Legislative Bill 2020, excuse me. All those in favor of Legislative Bill 2024-06 will...
07.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. You're right.
Six. Okay, so it is six. Thanks. All those in favor of 2024-06...
We need the motion.
Excuse me?
We need the motion.
I'm sorry. I'm a little confused. Sorry about that. Entertaining motion from council to approve Legislative Bill 2024-06. Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'll say a couple of things.
Sure, Joe.
At one of our meetings, council meetings, someone stood up and said that we were trying to ban motorized events in Wycomico County, and that's the furthest thing from the truth. I'm a motorsports fan, you know? I've been to car races, I've been to tractor pulls, mud hops, monster truck events, Bike Week, you know? So, we're not trying to ban any kind of motorized events. This came about because the county executive decided to do something for 363 days or 64 days, so it wouldn't come to the council, so the neighbors wouldn't know about it. And unfortunately, that's why we're here. That's why we're doing what we're doing today. They have a Jeep event in Pittsville. Been having it there for years. No complaints. You know, we have Bike Week at the ball stadium. No complaints. There's a place for things. So, that's why I introduced this legislation. I would hope the council goes along with it. We need to protect our neighborhoods, no matter where you live in Wycomico County, you wouldn't want something like that to happen across the street from you, you know? And if it was going to happen, you'd want to know about it first. So, anyway, that's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
Jeff?
So, we keep hearing things like transparency and checks and balances, and this legislation will make sure that that actually happens. So, that's all I got.
All those in favor of Legislative Bill 2024-06 will state so by saying aye. Opposed? It would be nay. We'll begin with Councilwoman Shields.
Aye.
Councilman Baker.
Aye.
Vice President Merritt.
Aye.
Councilman Holloway.
Aye.
Councilman Hastings.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Legislative Bill 2024-06 passes unanimously.
The last legislative bill is 2024-07. This is a bill that amends the county zoning code. The county council adopted an amendment to the county zoning code with regard to the cannabis businesses and cannabis use in the previous year. They did so based on what the understanding of Maryland law was at the time. In the last General Assembly, the legislature made changes to the cannabis laws, and the purpose of this legislation is to bring Wycomico County zoning code into compliance with the terms that were adopted by the General Assembly in the last session. So, there are minor changes, but they are, the purpose of this is to modify the county zoning code so that it is in compliance with the provisions that the General Assembly put into effect in the last legislative session. And Mr. Illuminati is here, should there be any questions. It's an act to amend Chapter 225 of the Wycomico County Code titled Zoning, Part 8, titled Special Exceptions for Particular Uses. Article 20, titled Uses and Standards for Particular Uses. Section, subsection 225-82.1, titled Cannabis Businesses, to modify cannabis business zoning regulations in Wycomico County. This is here for a public hearing.
Mr. Benson. Entertaining motion from council to approve Legislative Bill 2024-07. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Legislative Bill 2024-07 will begin with Councilman Holloway.
Aye.
Councilman Hastings.
Aye.
Councilwoman Shields.
Aye.
Councilman Baker.
Aye.
Vice President Merritt.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Legislative Bill Number 2024-07 passes unanimously.
Mr. President, that was actually the introduction of that bill, and council can have a public hearing.
Opposed.
That would be scheduled, we could schedule that for August the 6th, 6:00 p.m.
We don't need to restate the introduction and the vote, do we? Okay, thank you. Take it easy on me. Thank you, Mr. Benson. Mrs. Hurley?
So, next on the agenda this morning, we have Resolution Number 83-2024. This is to modify the membership, composition, and duties of the Natural Resources Conservation Advisory Committee, and we have Dr. Judith Stripling here, Chair of the Natural Resources Advisory Committee.
Entertaining motion from council to approve Resolution 83-2024. Second? Ms. Stripling? Yes.
At the last NRCAC meeting, there was discussion about a change to the version that you have.
Do you want me to open up?
Can you?
Yeah. Make sure that the public knows what's happening here. If you could make that comment with the mic and let the public know who you are and your position. Thank you.
I'm Judith Stripling, Chair of the Natural Resources Conservation Advisory Committee, and I thank you for helping us to update our guidelines. We spent about 18 months working on this, and Mr. Illuminati worked with us very closely. At the last meeting with Mr. Illuminati, it was suggested to change the composition of the committee, in addition to the changes that we had developed for the operational guidelines, the duties. And that change was designed to avoid an even number of members of the committee, so it was decided at that meeting to reduce the number of voting members from eight to seven. On further consideration, the committee decided at its last meeting that it would prefer to increase that number to nine, so that we would have the option of bringing in some new folks to hopefully move the committee along as people step down from their current positions. So, I'd like to add that to the proposed revision, and those two now additional voting members would be at-large members, so that we also increase the diversity of the committee. That's the only change from what you have in front of you. If there are any questions about what you have in front of you, I'd be happy to address those as well.
Okay. We'll take them one at a time. Yes, Josh?
Just to add on to that, I'm a member of the committee. They also want to make sure that, you know, they've been working on this for a while, trying to make sure that it made sense, and that we're updating what this looks like, also putting in, you know, updating the language as far as the chair, making sure that there's turnover, so putting in a lot of good governance policy into this. So, yeah, otherwise, the only other change there is just adding, making sure that there's nine members instead of seven. That's the only amendment to it, but otherwise, had a really good, robust discussion on it, and then the council, just to be clear, the committee did actually vote to bring this forward, to make that one change at the last committee meeting. They did vote to change it from seven to nine, per their recommendation.
Is that requiring an amendment?
I think it would, yes.
Would you like to make it?
Yeah. I'll make a motion to amend the membership, the Natural Resources Conservation Advisory Committee shall consist of no more than, make that nine members instead of seven. And then the rest of it should sound...
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion on this?
Just, the resolution's been made to change from seven to nine, but there's an Exhibit A, Operational Guidelines, that also has seven in it. Is that intended to be, that has to be changed, does that need to be changed by the council?
Might as well. It is an exhibit to the resolution. I think you're correct, Mr. Benson. Would you mind making sure that your amendment does include that section of the operational guidelines?
Yeah. I may make a motion, or amend my motion, I guess, to say that it is nine members, and I should mention also, of which two are at-large, and that that be noted in both the text as well as the operational...
Hang on a second. We'll get a second. Okay. Mr. Illuminati?
Thank you. Andrew Illuminati, County Attorney's Office. As Dr. Stripling said, I worked with them. The current exhibit is one at-large member, so it should really be three at-large members, not two.
Oh, probably two additional, yeah.
Because they had two, they dropped one, so it's nine members with three at-large. The remaining members and their designations remain unchanged.
Yeah. That is the amendment. That's a better statement.
There's a motion, second. Thank you, Mr. Illuminati.
Yes.
That's good to know. All right. Yes, Jeff?
I'm not sure who would be better suited. The members of this committee, are they spread out all over the county, not clustered in one area?
I would say yes.
The makeup of the people, the members?
We also have a representative from the city on the committee, but yes. They're spread out in terms of their backgrounds as well as their parts of natural resources areas, but that's why we wanted some at-large members, so that we could maybe go in directions that we haven't been able to before.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Do you have anyone on the committee from the municipalities, like Willard, Sharp Town, Bardello, Pittsville?
Not representing them directly. That would be a consideration, certainly.
It could be an at-large member.
And that's kind of how we did with the city member, you know, we kind of moved that in and then made that a specific position. Yeah, I'm sorry, I hadn't really given that, I guess it's a common error that we make, that we think...
I wouldn't think it'd be a common error. I just think, you know, that was just a suggestion, you know, so.
City suggestion.
Especially Sharp Town. I mean, they're right on the river, you know, and the Annie Coke.
Now, we do have, Doug Stevens is on the committee. He represents...
Sharp Town.
Yeah. His title, I believe, is a man trust representative. But, yeah, and that would be actually a very good way to...
Okay.
Sure. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the amendment?
Just one other addition, just to want to make clarity, that we do have, they make sure that there's an agricultural representative, someone who understands wildlife, forestry. We do have forestry folks on there, and then, you know, wetlands, and those kind of backgrounds. So, it's a pretty diverse group on that side of things. Yeah, and I did also want to acknowledge Jared Parks is here, he's another member of the R.C.A.K.
There's also, there are also two ex officio members on this committee, a planning commission representative and a county council representative. Josh is not a voting member.
Any other discussion on the amendment?
Just one other addition, just to want to make clarity, that we do have, they make sure that there's an agricultural representative, someone who understands wildlife, forestry. We do have forestry folks on there, and then, you know, and wetlands, and those kind of backgrounds. So, it's a pretty diverse group on that side of things. Yeah, and I did also want to acknowledge Jared Parks is here, he's another member of the R.C.A.K.
There's also, there are also two ex officio members on this committee, a planning commission representative and a county council representative. Josh is not a voting member.
Any other discussion on the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment, say aye. Opposed? Motion's carried. Amendment passes. Thank you, Josh. Any others? You can stay there, Judith, if you'd like. Thanks. Any other discussion? I noticed, and this may be for you, Mr. Illuminati, and this is a question that often comes up with this, with our government, stated in the exhibit as well as in the resolution itself. Referencing the committee's duties and functions, it says in Number 7, it says, "At the directive of the county executive or by resolution to the county council, review and make recommendations on any matter related to environmental protection, preservation, or sustainability in Wycomico County." Is there any way to rephrase that so it's more collaborative? Because it sounds to me as if they could get a directive from the executive in one, and then a resolution by the council on the other.
So, that's sort of a catch-all, so if there's a special project that came up, and it was just look at this very unique development opportunity, something of that nature, the...
An example of that was, the committee was enlisted by Executive Culver to review the plans for Pirate's Wharf way early, before there was even an actual working group developed for that, and we toured the site with Mr. Culver, and he asked our, got our input on how we thought it might best be developed.
I think sometimes we like to follow the process. It's not an attempt to obstruct, it's not an attempt to, of a power play or anything like that, but a lot of times, when directives like that are taken, especially with Pirate's Wharf, it's always good that it's aired publicly, so that the public knows that those are the initiatives that you're taking, and that that time is being spent, and that's why I think a lot of times when a directive comes from the executive branch, it should be approved by the council, because the council, and it sort of indirectly represents that transparency for the public. So, that's what we're looking for. At least, that's what I'm curious about as to what we could do, maybe to, and that way, it could simply be at the directive of the council, with approval by the council, or through resolution of the council, of the county council.
Well, I'll just strike that first sentence and just start with the second line. Review and make recommendations on any matter related to environmental protection, preservation, or sustainability, as requested by the Wycomico County Government, that encompasses...
Yeah, and I guess, from your legal perspective, when it says county government, does that not mean that it has to be both bodies in unison? Is that correct?
Depends on the situation. I'm not, Mr. Wilber's the county attorney. I know in different scenarios, it means different things. Signing certain legal documents, the county executive signs and represents the county in that capacity. So, if Mr. Benson has a recommendation, that would be my recommendation, is it encompasses both. Again, that was seven years ago. It's not, it's the last catch-all provision. Additionally, seven could just be struck in its entirety, and at any point, council can introduce a resolution to specially instruct the committee to take on a special assignment.
Yeah, I don't think I'd want to strike it, because I think it's a good thing to state what the county government's position would be in it. I'd just like to make it a little more concise.
It's important to remember, this is an advisory committee. We make no decisions. We have no legislative authority or anything else, so... We have no legislative authority or anything else, so our recommendations go to the county executive and the county council. I don't think there's ever been a time when those were shielded from one or...
No, and I'm not suggesting that is the case at all. What I'm trying to do is get it out on a public platform, so that the public knows that that's, that those are things that are developing. I would say, "At the directive of the county executive or the county council, and with approval by the county council, review and make recommendations of any related matters." It's the only way I can think of doing it right now. I just, if I felt more secure that your recommendation on county government would ensure that both branches were vetting this publicly, I would be okay with that, but it seems as if there's some gray areas, you feel there may be some gray areas.
The county takes a different, for certain documents, certain things get treated differently. For this, it could be, you know, it captures it, however the council feels best protects, is what...
I understand. I think I'll make an amendment to amend this, so that it reads it, "At the directive of the county executive with approval from the county council, or by resolution of the county council, review and make recommendations." That's my motion. I can't make that motion, someone else has to make it, if you don't mind. Shane, could you make that, just what I said, as a resolution?
You said as a resolution?
Yeah.
How do you want to say it?
Just as I, you don't have to repeat it, just, I need you to make that motion, though.
I'll make it. I'll second it.
We have a motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Repose. Motion's carried, amendment passes. Thank you, Mr. Illuminati. Any other discussion? Seeing none, any further discussion on the resolution as amended? All those in favor of Resolution 83-2024 as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Repose. Motion's carried, resolution passes as amended. Thank you, Judith. Thank you very much.
Okay, next, for your consideration, is Resolution Number 84-2024. This is to approve a memorandum of understanding between Wacomico Farm and Home Show, Inc. and Wacomico County, and we have Mr. Steve Miller here, Director of Recreation, Parks, and Tourism.
Entertained a motion from council, approved Resolution 84-2024. So move. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Repose. Motion's carried, Resolution 84-2024 passes unanimously.
Next is the submission of an appointment and a reappointment to the Board of Library Trustees, an appointment to the Wacomico Behavioral Health Council, and an appointment to Shore Up, Inc., and you have before you Mr. Bunky Luffman, Director of Administration.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning, Bunky.
So we have a series of these, like my fellow Wildcat, County Council Administrator Laura Hurley said. So the first is a reappointment for Mr. Chip DeShiel and the Library Board of Trustees, you know, sets policies, procedures, guidelines for library, and oversees proposed and approved budget operations.
Okay, Resolution Number 85-2024 is confirming the reappointment of Charles R. DeShiel, Jr., Esquire, to the Wacomico County Board of Library Trustees.
Entertained a motion from council, approved Resolution 85-2024. So move. Second. Any discussion? Mr. DeShiel's been doing an excellent job with the library board, I sit on the library board, and I know Shane has as well, and you do a great job, Mr. DeShiel, in leading that organization, doing great work. Thank you. All those in favor of Resolution 85-2024, say aye.
Aye.
Repose. Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Resolution...
Sorry. And then, no, I didn't mention the council president, so I was going, and the next one is the council president being appointed to the library board.
I don't know if I'd vote...
Yeah, be careful here.
Check out these...
Be very careful.
I don't know if we'll be able to get a second or not.
So that is Resolution Number 86-2024, and this is confirming the appointment of John T. Cannon to the Wacomico County Board of Library Trustees.
Entertained a motion from council, approved Resolution 86-2024. So move. Second.
Second.
All right, motion's carried. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Repose.
Aye.
Resolution Number 86-2024 passes.
Resolution Number 87-2024 is confirming the appointment of Jeffrey Merritt to Wacomico Behavioral Health Council.
Entertained a motion from council, approved Resolution 87-2024. So move. Can we get a second?
Second.
Second, we got a second, good. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Repose. Motion's carried, Resolution 87-2024 passes unanimously.
Resolution Number 88-2024 is confirming the appointment of Shani Shields to Shore Up, Inc.
Entertained a motion from council, approved Resolution 88-2024. Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Repose. Motion's carried, Resolution 88-2024 passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Luffman.
And the next item for business is Resolution Number 89-2024. This is approving a contract with Underbox Systems International, LLC, to provide event booking and financial software for use in connection with the Wacomico Youth and Civic Center for a period of five years.
Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 89-2024. Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Miller, did you have any comments you wanted to make? Okay, all right. All those in favor of Resolution 89-2024, say aye.
Aye.
Repose. Motion's carried, resolution passes. Ms. Chetel, how are you?
Good morning, Council President Cannon, Wacomico County Council. I'm Anjali Chetel, the internal auditor, and I would like to present the Wacomico County Anonymous Reporting Hotline Report.
You have the floor, thank you.
Thank you. Under Resolution 34-2024, that established the hotline manual, the internal auditor is to submit an annual report. In fiscal year '24, there were fifteen cases. By form of submission, two were by phone, thirteen were submitted online. By case type, eight were for HR, seven were for compliance and ethics, and none were for fraud. The cumulative summary was eighty-two reports since the implementation in February of 2009 through June of 2024. That's fifty-one under the old system, that ended on March 31st, and thirty-one under the current system. Per Manual Section 4.3, Meetings Regarding Policies, the committee, as now established, met on July 9th, 2024, to discuss any potential changes. And per Manual Section 5, Summary of Reports, I sent a copy to the council and to the executive on July 10th, 2024. Did you have any questions about the report? Okay, I do have two questions for you. The report, I wasn't sure if it should be submitted, I mean, presented to the public, if it was, then did you want to approve it or adopt it by resolution on its own, or in an annual report, or in like the annual plan?
So I would leave that up to your discretion.
Okay.
Historically, we have not approved them by resolution.
Okay.
And it's totally up to council as to whether or not you want it posted on the website.
I looked at a few counties, a lot of them did not report the numbers online over time. There was one county where there was like an annual report, and then there was a paragraph with some numbers in it. I could certainly do that, or it could just be, the public still got to see it as part of the brief book today, so there is that transparency, but then not actually just having it as something maintained on the IA website.
Questions from council?
I think it would be interesting to see the complaints at some point in time. We've never really seen what the complaints are.
We have that privilege, I think that's why the anonymity is there. The only question I would have is, on the fifteen incidences, how do we, how do we know as to whether or not they have been addressed appropriately?
So under the current scheme, if they relate to human resources, they go to the county attorney, and then he will tell, he tells me that they're closed, or like I might follow up and then say, you know, are they closed? Because of privilege and confidentiality and so forth, he doesn't have to, my understanding is that he doesn't have to tell me, and that then protects also going to that, the anonymity of this, that they can take care of what they need to take care of without breaking that with whoever's involved in this situation. So unless he directs me, then I won't have any information about what's been happening. You would have to have him come in and talk to you about those cases. For compliance, if they involve the council office, then Bob Benson has them, and then the same applies, that if he wants me to look into something, then he can direct me, but otherwise, it would be for him to decide that they're closed, or for him to do whatever is necessary. Sorry, the same for the compliance and ethics as well, that they're first going to go to the county attorney if they're on the executive side, or anything other than council.
The reason I ask is because, I mean, you could have an employee who maybe has called the hotline three different times, and feels as if no resolution, there's no resolution to their concerns, and how are we going to resolve that issue unless it's possibly, another step is taken, whether or not it has to be a closed session, maintaining anonymity, but a closed session for the council to address.
So in that case, the lead investigator could request that closed session. The other thing is that if there's several reports of something, then I can try to address that in an audit plan, to look at things from an objective perspective about if there's like an ongoing general issue in an area, and that the audit manual allows, or the hotline manual allows me to, to use that towards the risk assessment for the county.
Sean, you said we're not, that's not privileged information, but these are anonymous tips, and we could do a closed session, and those complaints could be revealed to us, and then we could follow up with whoever, whichever section that we needed to do, if they were taken care of or not.
Yeah, I think we need to reconsider that.
There's a lot of things that maybe we shouldn't, but, you know, if people's complaining about this stuff and nothing's being done, this hotline's ineffective.
Right, I agree. We can certainly revisit how we want to address that. I think we'll probably want to do that in closed.
In a closed session, having all the members of the hotline, so having the county attorney and having the council attorney here discussing a path forward where there's more transparency, I certainly think that that can be a discussion that we have in the future, but as it is right now, it's fairly non-transparent, and to encourage the reporting, and then to encourage the resolution by the lawyers, basically, for the county, the council attorney and the county attorney.
Maybe we'll look at that on a quarterly basis.
Yeah.
In reference to this fraud line update itself, what would you like to do?
I would prefer just to send the annual report to you and to the executive, and then it be published in the brief book, so the public can see it in that period that it's reported, until, and then if the public wants a copy of it, then we can, then that FOIA request can happen for the item, but otherwise, I don't think it's necessary to have a specific report published every year for it.
Everybody okay with that? Okay, that's fine, that's good.
So then the other question, oh, so, yeah, okay, that answers the other one about if there needs to be a resolution for it. Okay.
Is it good?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chetel.
Thank you.
This time, we open the floor for public comments. If you have any comments you'd like to make, come to the podium, please state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns.
Hi, I'm back. My name is Mikel Dahlien, I'm a resident of Wacomico County. I'm here today representing the Save Conley Mill Park Movement. We're deeply grateful for the recent motor vehicle legislation passed today to protect our quality of life and environment in Wacomico County. The legislation is a significant step towards safeguarding not only Conley Mill from the events that threaten the original vision for this invaluable land, but for all county lands and residents. However, two crucial issues remain to be addressed. First, we must permanently memorialize the original vision for Conley Mill Park. These plans were carefully crafted with input from impacted stakeholders, and have existed since the land's donation. As citizens, we want to know that they will not be called into question again. We urge greater transparency regarding the drastically altered timeline for mining, and assurances that the forested land and watersheds will be protected according to the original vision, as advised by the NRCAC. Second, the recent Safari at the Quarry events have led to a dramatic increase in illegal traffic and use of the property. This was predicted by Councilman Holloway and many community members. It is a direct result of the advertising and attention placed on the property, including stunning drone footage showcasing the site as the ultimate four-by-four playground. These trespassers often stay for hours, yelling, screaming, shooting guns. We are afraid to even have our kids in our backyard. This illegal activity, which slowed dramatically after the donation of the land, was a key reason for constituents' support of the donation. It has now returned with a vengeance. We stand at a crossroads. The estimated completion time for mining has doubled, new issues of safety and security have arisen, and the county faces increased liability due to reckless trespassers. However, I believe a middle ground exists. We propose fencing the 55-acre mining exclusion area, leaving the remaining 180-plus acres open to the public. A pedestrian bridge from Naylor Mill Forest Trails can minimize costs and provide parking at Henry S. Parker, and access to the property for hikers, bikers, and families. This interim solution would promote healthy public use, combat illegal activity through good steward, citizen stewardship of the land, and protect the county from liability while the mining is completed. The mining of cover for our landfill generates tens of millions of dollars in savings for the county. We urge you to invest a fraction of those savings to secure the work site, fulfill the promise of low-impact public recreation, and protect the vital ecological resources on the site. This path forward balances fiscal responsibility, safety, environmental protection, public access, and the highest and best use of this extraordinary place. We ask the county executive and the county council to please consider this proposal to bridge the gap, until the park can be completed according to the original vision, and create a positive outcome for all of Wacomico and the tri-county region. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chetel.
Hi, Holly Campbell, Wacomico County resident and Shutter Hills. Just want to back up everything Mikel said, don't have any prepared comments. Thank you for passing the legislation today. I would say, I would see in the media sometimes that it didn't seem right to, for the council to propose what I guess was targeted legislation. I would say it's unfortunate that it has to be described that way, I think it was necessary. I appreciate the effort everybody put into getting that done. We are a homeowner group of about fifty homeowners, I'm one of them. I feel like we're all citizens, we all contribute to this county, we do deserve the protection of our property values, and having a four-wheel-drive park on the property line is not a good thing for fifty homeowners to have, and those people contribute to our economy, they contribute to the businesses. I'm a business owner, I contribute to our tax dollars, I sell real estate. If I look back at my career, I've probably contributed about a million dollars to the county budget and county transfer tax, in deals I've participated in in Wacomico County. That doesn't count the revenue generated by new construction, home contractors, plumbers, drywallers, painters, cleaners, septic guys, like, we contribute a lot, and I'm one person, I'm not saying that I matter, but my voice matters, our neighbors' voices matter, and we did feel like that wasn't very important to some of our government leaders. And while we were told that bringing business into Wacomico County was more important, I think the message to the public should also be that the citizens, I think, should be considered more important than anything else, because we are the county, we drive the county, we drive the county economics. And I appreciate that you guys stepped up to pass the legislation. I'd say all legislation is targeted when it's passed, because that's the reason that it exists, so appreciate you guys doing that, and thank you for your time.
Ms. Campbell?
Hi, my name is James Dahlien, I live in Wacomico County. I'd just like to reiterate what Holly just spoke about, and also Mikel, and to reiterate some, a path forward for this park or this property, you know, 55 acres, secure that, maybe using some of the money that's saved every year, millions of dollars with the soil, and open up the rest. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mike Goldberg, Wacomico County. I am here today to declare victory. It appears that no more Safari at the Quarry off-road events will be held at the Conley Mill Quarry site, and the will of the citizens have prevailed despite the county executive's tone deafness. Following Safari at the Quarry, which was held on May 4th and 5th, the county executive touted what a great success the event was. I must ask, in what universe was this a success? I must ask, in what universe was this a success? If it was a success, how come there won't be another event? How come after two and a half months, Wacomico County still has not received payment of its contractually guaranteed 10% share of net profits or the required economic impact statement? The event promoter, Live Wire Media, has apparently yet to render payment or submit the financial documents necessary to calculating the county's share of net profits and nonexistent benefits to the local economy. Why has the county executive failed to enforce these contractual provisions? The answer is simple. Not only did the county not make any money, but it undoubtedly lost money because the county's direct expenses were significant. County taxpayers paid for earthmoving, fencing materials, deputy sheriffs, a street sweeper, county employee labor, and equipment depreciation, et cetera. Has the site been restored to its original condition as required? We don't really know, because nobody is allowed onsite to verify. The executive is hoping that these issues will just go away and be forgotten, but be assured that they will not. Among the 12 pages of glaring contractual deficiencies enumerated in my March 6th letter to the executive, no deadlines for submission of the financial statement or payment of the county's share of the nonexistent net profits were stipulated. Is there any reasonable excuse for this unacceptable delay? Of course there isn't. The executive's failure to engage in the requisite due diligence before signing the contract and her failure to enforce the provisions of the contract can only be described as negligent and malfeasant. Every taxpayer in Wacomico County should be enraged by the circumstance, but I trust that the county executive will personally reimburse the taxpayers for her losses. This is what happens when you have an unqualified county executive who had no experience in law, public administration, or finance, making decisions behind closed doors which were only intended to benefit her friends at Live Wire Media. This is entirely unsatisfactory and is illustrative of why the position for county executive must be eliminated. I encourage everyone to vote for the question A, Wacomico County Charter Amendment, to transition back to the council management structure of government and restore transparency, accountability, competence, common sense, and common decency to Wacomico County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goldberg.
Hi, Craig Stoffko, Wacomico County. Concur with all my neighbors, wholeheartedly agree with everything they've said. Real quickly, this may have been brought up at some point, but I've never heard it addressed. First of all, thank you all for the work you did. In terms of the land and what happened to it, my biggest disappointment was the night that all the Jeep people came, and we were kind of pitted against one another. And their contention was that they left the property in as good or better condition than they found it. But what they failed to mention was that, at this time last year, there was one mile, almost exactly one mile of trails back there. Today, and you can go online and compare the satellite images, today there are three and a half miles of trails back there. The number of trees that had to be cut down in order to make these trails is impossible to count. To answer Mike's question, will it be restored to its original condition? Mother Nature is doing the best she can. I still go back there every day, but no one ever told me I couldn't, so I still go back there all the time. Mother Nature is overgrowing those trails, but the trees that were cut down are gone. And most of them were little trees, but when you kill a little tree, it never gets a chance to be a big tree. So very unfortunate that, in addition to the lack of transparency through this whole thing by certain people, there was a great deal of disingenuousness. To say that the land wasn't impacted and they left it in better condition is absurd when they added more than two miles of new trails. And I'm not saying they made the new trails. I don't know who made the new trails. But the fact that obstacles were built on these new trails using gigantic tire tractors, railroad ties, hard pressed to believe that anyone's ever going to go back there and remove those, that construction from the forest. So again, thank you. We really appreciate your work on this. Thank you for listening to the people.
Thank you.
Hello, thank you. My name is Joe White, and Wacomico County. I just want to start by saying thank you for passing the legislation to control the motorized events and protect our assets in the county as taxpayers. I also want to bring some attention to the fact that the process that you all, the council, have used has been very public, very transparent, although we haven't had anyone lately speak against this legislation prior to today. Lately, they could. They had that chance. They could have reached out to you all. You all are very public. When you take that same line of transparency, and I think we're very lucky to have Ms. Chantel as our inspector or as our auditor, I was at the last work session and very listening very intently to what she had to say. She's, and I appreciate President Cannon and Councilman Holloway today, you directed her to do this investigation. To me, that's what I hear her asking. She's, whether it's Mr. Benson, or Mr. Wilbur, or current executive, any one of you, she's asking for someone to ask her to look into stuff. And I think there's other things that need to be looked into. You have this hotline, but you're also having a lot of attrition, particularly in your Public Works Department, your Roads Department. I live in the rural part of the county. I also live on a road where the fire trucks utilize to get to emergencies. Our Roads Department's pretty important. Someone's house is on fire on Zion Church Road, they're barreling down Moore Center Road. We need our Public Works. We've lost a lot of experience. She's asking for that direction. When we talk about Conley Mill, one of the questions I asked our councilman in District Five, where I live and where Conley Mill is, Councilman Holloway, I said, how do you know what was utilized from the landfill or from Public Works to build these obstacles? He can't answer it. Now, it's not his job to answer it. It's our executive's job. This is why we should pass this referendum in November. But what I'm asking you now is let's direct Ms. Chantel, in narrowing scope, this is not a witch hunt, and I don't think it will be hard to find. But we need to know where leases are coming from. We need to know what equipment's being used. I'm a volunteer in the Parks and Rec Department. Two springs ago, we needed to move equipment from the Civic Center to Winter Place to run some free clinics. We were not allowed to use any other vehicles besides Civic Center, Parks and Rec vehicles. So if I'm not allowed as a volunteer, why are they allowed to use whatever's available? I'd like to know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Good morning, Denise Harden, Wacomico County resident, also a resident of Shadow Hills. I just want to echo what some of the people in this room have said today, to thank the council for your work, thank the council for your insight with respect to this piece of legislation concerning off-road events. I don't see that legislation as targeted. I don't believe most of the people in the county see that legislation as targeted. Instead, this was an act by our legislative body, working with the community. And what I see from you guys is a responsive approach to governance. It is responsible, it is insightful, and we are lucky that we had this particular council approaching and working on this particular issue for the people of Wacomico County. And again, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim Atkins, Wacomico County. I hope I'm not getting in the middle of the Conley Mill people. Tried to let them finish, because they have a very important, important issue that has been dealt with. I want to talk to you now about something that's getting ready to come up in a work session today. And that's removing or controlling invasive bamboo in the county. Houseville 90 prohibits the selling of invasive bamboo, prohibits the planting of invasive bamboo, prohibits a person from allowing invasive bamboo to grow on a property without proper upkeep and appropriate containment measures, including barriers or trenches. In order to eliminate bamboo, there's not a lot of opposition to the first two prohibitions of not selling or planting invasive bamboo. The problem begins with it already growing on private property, and just what is the definition of proper upkeep and/or containment? This bill was passed and approved by the governor on May 8th of 2023, last year, and was ordered to take effect effective October 1st, 2023. And we're just starting to hear about it last month, in June of 2024. Throughout this bill, which became law, it states too many times to mention the county may. So let's talk about this and get the regulations and enforcement straight before you go and implement ordinances which are unclear or which could have a negative impact on your constituents. The first item to discuss are the penalties. Listed under penalties, the state bill states a $50 civil fine for the first offense. The county wants a civil fine not to exceed $1,000 for the first offense. Who determines the amount of the fine? The state assesses a $200 civil fee if a second offense occurs unrelated to the first offense. County doesn't address this. The state maximizes a $3,000 civil fine per a 12-month period, as well as stating each business day that a violation continues is considered a separate offense. The county as well states each day as a separate offense and is finable, but has no limits on the amount of the fine. They also state that an unsuccessful attempt to control the bamboo is not an excuse to not be fined. The county then goes as far as to place a lien against the property owner. In addition to the lien, if the bamboo is not removed, the county has the right to come onto your property, remove the bamboo, and then bill you for the expense of their equipment and man-hours. All these determinations are made by the director of planning and zoning or designee. So here are my questions. I guess I don't get to ask my questions.
Oh, sorry. Time's up. I was taking notes, Jim.
I'll give you my questions.
Good morning. Thank God for the opportunity to be here. To President Cannon, the members of the county council, and all those present, peace and blessings. My name is Mariam Ashanti, and I'm a county resident. And I appreciate this body, having the Board of Education come and talk to you all and the citizens quarterly. I don't have the article, but I did forward an article to you all, asking for the Board of Education to address these issues and how it will be corrected in Wacomico County. With the money that's given to the Board of Education, and citizens like myself are always saying, give the Board of Education whatever they ask for. Now we're saying, educate our children. There should be no reason, no reason why we will be getting a bad report. And Maryland is not looking that good. And we are in Maryland. So I can't speak for the rest of Maryland, but Wacomico County, we need for them to correct and move us up the ladder. And my last point is, from my understanding, when a child reaches the third grade and they cannot read, people are building prisons based on that, because they figure if they can't read it, whatever. So we need to find out what the reading level is in the third grade. And if there's a problem, we need to correct it. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Ms. Ashanti is a former president of Wacomico County NAACP, served 20 years, maybe?
24.
24. You stand corrected. And is still doing, as you can see, is still doing the work for the community. Thank you.
Good morning. Vaughn Sigurs, Wacomico County resident. And I would like to continue Mr. Atkins' questions, if I may. So here are the questions. What training or expertise does the director or his designee have? What determines the amount of the fines assessed? Seems like room for personalities to get involved rather than a clear, determined amount. Where are the representatives from the Department of Natural Resources, Department of the Environment, Department of Agriculture, and EPA to discuss safe ways to contain or destroy the bamboo? How can bamboo be controlled? What herbicides are effective and legal to use? Are these different regulations for bamboo near wetlands? Per the University of Maryland's website, herbicides are stated to not be the most effective means to kill bamboo and may take treatments up to three years. It is stated that a barrier must be at least 24 inches deep with 2 inches to 4 inches above ground to prevent growing over the barrier. The objective is commendable, to address an invasive plant and remove or prevent its spread in the county. However, there appear to be so many unanswered questions, as well as no proposed means or solution to address this. There is no mention of appeals if the homeowner has a disagreement on punishment and heavy-handed enforcement by persons who have as yet been trained or educated to be experts of invasive bamboo. Do your due diligence, ask questions, look for solutions, and set goals which are obtainable. Remember the Hill states, I'm sorry, remember the bill states, the county may, not shall. Those are the conclusions of Mr. Atkins' comments and/or questions. And I would just like to add, I had a fabulous bamboo hat that I wanted to wear, and I completely forgot it until he started talking about bamboo.
I give it silence. Any other public comments? Seeing them, that concludes public comments. Council comments? Joe?
Mr. Winn's not here today, and he's the one that I think initiated getting us into all these conflict about weapons in the park. So we voted for that, and I supported it. Since then, I've received some emails, and I hope one of those people that sent me an email doesn't own a gun, because it was a pretty nasty email. But tomorrow is July 17th. Now, that's not any kind of a holiday or anything many people will remember. Two years ago, I'm sure there's some people in Greenwood, Indiana, that will remember that date. The gentleman Jonathan Douglas Sparman, I think that's how I'm pronouncing it, walked into a mall, went into a bathroom, loaded his weapon, came out into the mall, and within 15 seconds, had killed three people. He had hundreds of rounds of ammunition with him. He had hundreds of rounds of ammunition with him. He was ready to kill a lot of people. In that 15 seconds that it took him to kill those people, a 22-year-old named Olasha Dickens, with a, he was a licensed carry holder, had his own weapon. He was licensed. He had training. Within that 15 seconds or at that 15 seconds, he shot and killed this mass shooter. Nobody knows how many lives that gentleman saved that day. Now, we caught a lot of grief about having passed the legislation that allows carry permits in the parks in Wycomico County. But I can tell you right now, I'd rather have somebody in that park with a carry permit that's been trained and training for that. I think some of our members have been through that training. I've not, but I'm prior military, so I know what the training probably is. The training for that, I'd rather have somebody in that park that's trained with a carry permit than I would have some nutcase with a rifle coming in and just wanting to shoot people. So that's why I voted for that legislation and I will stand by it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Holly. Any other counsel comments? Shane?
I'm sorry I missed the meeting last meeting time. I would be going along with Josh. I think he voted against the guns in the park. I think there was one incident in the park. I believe that we have our children and we hear about guns and what happened the, what, Saturday with the former president, where this young man had a gun and was shooting through the crowd. And I'm just concerned about, we start shooting and bullets have no names and somebody innocent, an innocent child or innocent person going to the zoo. If we had crime in the parks, playgrounds, things like that, I may have would have supported it. But just because someone has training don't mean they're mentally stable to carry a gun. Because people who are mentally unstable can certainly perpetrate a fraud to act stable. So that was one of my concerns about guns. I do not like guns. I didn't allow my children to have cap pistols. I had them come in as a child, but I was scared my kids would hit each other in the head with one. But I think that, I don't want to have to say I told you so if some innocent person gets shot. But I just feel that wasn't the right way to go. I want to thank, and Mr. Miller left. Last Thursday, we met at Indian Village. That was one of my campaign things I said I wanted to do. I called the Ghost Playground. We did meet with Steve Miller and his staff about how we can revitalize the playground, and it went very well. We want to do fundraising and he's going to find out how we can donate money to take ownership of the playground, the community. So we'll probably be meeting again. And one of the ladies was a daycare provider. She's going to provide a community center in that area, in the Chippewa area where, you know, we had the shooting the other year. So I think that was great for her to be offering that as a community center later on. And then I'm calling Sean Tucker, Sean Tucker, who's going to offer two days of programs like STEM. Because many of those children that live in the neighborhood don't have access to STEM. So much certain children to get in that program. I found that the Salvation Army is $155 for kids to go to summer camp. So to me, Salvation Army is not for low-income people. It's for rich kids, working people, but it's not for kids that live in the neighborhood that, because their parents cannot afford it. So that's why we lose our children to the streets. Because no one believes in giving free day camps like when I was growing up. Everybody has to be paid. So I think that that's one of the things that I think is wrong with our society. Everybody wants to get paid, but they always talk about how we're losing our children because many of us do not want to work with the children. So again, I'm sorry I missed the meeting. And I'm glad to see everybody. And the last comment I made when the gentleman said the trees were tore down or cut down. I remember many years ago, we had a program called Weed and Seed. And before we could cut anything along Mitchell Pond, we had to contact the environmental people because certain trees could not be cut down. So who contacted environmental people before you cut a tree down? I doubt if anybody was contacted. So that's, to me, that's a violation of environmental rules. We couldn't cut anything down until they had to tell us and give us permission what could be cut down. So that's my last comment.
Just going to touch on the carrying firearms in the parks. Carrying a firearm is a huge responsibility. Most people that I know that have a wear and carry permit don't want to lose it. They go through background checks. They go through training. You want them there. If somebody comes into a park and starts shooting people, sometimes it can take 5, 10, 15 minutes, 20 minutes for the police to respond. You want somebody there who can stop that threat. Again, it is, those that are carrying need to realize huge responsibility, but they can save a lot of lives. And most of the people that I know that have a wear and carry, they're walking around Wycomico County every day and you don't even know it. Don't even know it. But if something happens, they can take care of it and save a lot of lives. Thank you for everybody that came today.
So, good morning, everybody. I always want to thank everybody for coming out, sharing your concerns, coming to the podium. You know, we appreciate that. It helps us in the decision process. And we always seem to be involved in one hot topic or another. But during all this, we are actually getting good work done for the county. Today was a good example, the motor vehicle legislation, moving Fruitland Primary forward. All those things are still moving forward. So we are getting good stuff done. I think we're all well aware of what happened on Saturday up in Butler, Pennsylvania. And I want to send my appreciation out to all the first responders that were involved in that and the prayers to the families affected. And, you know, I've seen a lot of activity on social media that is really not very positive. Things like, sorry he missed. For the record, the shooter did not miss. 50-year-old Corey Comptore, a former firefighter, fire chief, he dove on top of his family to save them and he lost his life. So two other people are in the hospital recovering from their injuries. So it wasn't an event without any consequences. It's been proven that the divisive rhetoric that has been in our society can have serious and sometimes direct or indirect consequences. It's one thing to disagree with somebody. Nothing wrong with that. Peaceful disagreements, discussions, absolutely nothing wrong with that. But it's entirely different when we continually spread hate and false information. And whether that information is spread in the news media, on the internet, press releases, or on social media, and I think social media is the biggest violator of this. It's, at the end of the day, it's still wrong. I always urge everybody to check your facts. If you hear something, I think Ms. Shields said one time a few meetings ago, don't believe it. Check your facts. If I tell you something, don't believe me. I'll tell you where to go to check your facts. That way you can distinguish it between divisive rhetoric and factual information. I want to thank Barry Beecham for organizing prayer vigil last night at the City Park Bandstand. There was, I don't know, President Cannon and I were there. There was, what, 40, 50 people there?
Yeah, easily.
Yeah. It was a last-minute event where the community came together and we just had a moment of prayer. And if there's ever a time where we need to pray for our country, it's right now. And lastly, I want to thank the folks up at Lift Church in North Salisbury. They had a serve day on Saturday and I helped out with Wycomico Clean and the Dallin family. And, you know, we get out there and pick up litter in these roads all over the county. Well, we worked with Lift Church over the weekend and we had probably 20, 25 people. We split up into different groups. Mayor Taylor was up there from the city, so, you know, had a few elected officials up there. Just trying to improve our community. And I just want to give a shout out to them for that effort. It was a good day. I think I was told earlier, was that you I saw in the rain on Naylor Mill Road? And if you know how hot it was on Saturday, that rain felt pretty good. So yeah, it was me. But that's all I got. Thank you.
Now the comments. In reference to presidential comments, I'd also like to thank Barry Beecham for the event. It was a really nice event and it was very well attended. And I appreciate the work he put into bringing that together all at last minute. In reference to the referendum initiative that's being placed on the ballot, in reference to the executive legislative form of government, I'd like to make a couple comments and clarifications actually that I think are necessary for the public in order to dispel a large degree of misinformation in the community right now. There have been comments made very directly about county employees losing their jobs, about them losing their health insurance, their pensions, if the government structure were to change. We want to make sure that you understand 100% that this is nothing more than bad information being spread within the community. That is not going to happen. Other than the county executive's office, the organizational structure for each department will not change. Neither will the employees have any concerns about whether or not they're going to lose their health insurance or pension. That's not going to happen either. The county will still operate as it does now, just it would only operate under a council-manager form of government. So I wanted to make that very clear to everybody. And so you do understand as well, rather than a county executive form of government, the county council would hire a county administrator who would also oversee the department heads, which is what we have done before. Overseeing the daily operations as well as to help implement any type of county policies. And this would all be done with the oversight of the county council. So some people were a little nervous as to what the change might entail. I hope that will help clarify it for you. That being said, entertain a motion to adjourn from legislative session so we can go into work sessions. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Meeting's been adjourned. The first item on the open work session is the removal of approximately 4.15 acres of forest conservation easement on Old Eden Road in Eden, Maryland. We have Mr. Colin Harrison here, our environmental planner.
Morning, counsel.
Morning. How are you?
Morning. Good. Colin Harrison, environmental planner for Wycomico County, planning and zoning and community development. This request is for forest conservation easement relocation on tax map 57, parcels 121 and 123. This property is west of Old Eden Road and east of Route 13. These two parcels are bound by Forest Conservation Plan 2007-43. They are proposing this relocation of 4.15 acres of forest conservation easement to an off-site mitigation bank. Since the easement relocation will be off-site, it will be at a two-to-one rate, conserving a total of 8.30 acres. The proposed mitigation bank is located off of Morris Road in Pittsville, tax map 51, parcel 40. This request is to allow for the future development of these two parcels that are zoned I-2 heavy industrial.
Any questions? I think it was all pretty clear. We appreciate you presenting it in such detail with the brief book.
Thank you.
Mrs. Hurley is outside. I guess the next step is that we would take formal measures in order to move this forward. Mr. Benson, do you have a?
I mean, assuming they just need to direct Ms. Hurley to draft a resolution.
I can read from her notes.
Thank you.
She has here that the public notice can be held on, I'm sorry, the public hearing can be held on August 20th at 10:00 a.m. is what she has here.
Do you have the resolution prepared at the same time?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Any other questions from you?
That's it?
All right.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is regulations on the control of invasive bamboo. We do have Dr. Schibbling still here and Councilman Hastings, who has presented this legislation. Josh, I'll give you the floor if you'd like.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
I don't mean to interrupt. Can I just say one thing before we get to that? It's in response, I guess, in part to what Mr. Atkins raised. So Mr. Hastings asked that a bill be drafted and I helped draft the bill. The, what I want to make sure the council understands and Mr. Atkins and the public understands that the section that relates to enforcement is basically using the municipal infraction law that the state of Maryland has and Wycomico County utilizes. That's what that is. And when that occurs, in this situation, the planning and zoning director or someone in that office would issue a citation. If that site, if the person who receives a citation does not pay the citation or does not act in the satisfaction of the director, that citation is then filed in the court, in the district court. And there is a municipal hearing, a municipal infraction hearing in front of a district court judge who decides whether or not there's been a violation under the code and then determines what the penalty will be. The $1,000 is simply what the municipal infraction provision provides. Doesn't mean the judge is going to enforce it. It's much the same as getting a speeding ticket. You have the right, if you get a speeding ticket, you're going to have a right in this situation to go in and argue to the judge that you're not guilty. You're going to have a right to argue to the judge that the fine should be something other than that, than the amount that's set. As to the provision that it can be issued every single day, that again is a standard provision that relates to municipal infractions. But in order for that to apply, the planning director is going to have to literally issue a citation every single day. And in my experience, that's not what happens. And with due respect, from a municipal or county perspective, the reason that you use a municipal infraction is to get compliance. It's not to get the fine. You know, and in most instances, if the homeowner, property owner goes before the judge and says, I've complied, the judge, in my experience, is generally happy that they've complied and they're not particularly interested in applying the fine. And the point of the fine is not that the county is going to get those monies. The point of the fine is that it's a way to enforce or get compliance. So I just want to make clear that the enforcement provisions in here, if there's somebody to be blamed for the way it's written, you can blame me and just to a lesser extent Andrew Illuminati from the county attorney's office because, you know, it went to his office for review. But we utilize the municipal infraction law and that's the enforcement mechanism. And it allows a full hearing in front of a judge and a judge, an independent judge, is going to make a decision on whether there's guilt or innocence and decide what the fine is going to be. As to the other parts of that, under the municipal infraction law, there is a provision that allows the county to go into a bait. But again, the judge has to authorize that. So it's not something the county can do without the court finding that it needs to be done. You know, the council may want to modify those provisions. You may want to come up with a different enforcement provision, but that's where that came from. It's an existing provision. It's using municipal infraction law to do it. And from my perspective, it protects the property owner by allowing them to have a full hearing in front of a judge before any decisions are made. The only thing that the enforcement officer is going to be able to decide is whether to issue the citation or not issue the citation. Once they issue the citation, it's in the hands of the judge and the judge is going to make the decision about guilt or innocence. So I just want to make sure you all So I just want to make sure you all understand that and for the public's benefit, that's the way the enforcement mechanism is written. And, you know, I've never, I don't represent Wycomico County in these. That's Mr. Wilbur's office. I have done municipal infraction enforcements for municipalities. At least from my perspective as the attorney for a municipal corporation, my attitude is we're not here to get the fine. We're here to get compliance. If the homeowner comes in and says they're going to comply, if the judge works something out with the homeowner to get compliance, we just want compliance. We're not there for the fine. It's, the fine is simply a mechanism to try to get enforcement and compliance. So I just want to make sure the council understands that. If anybody has any questions about that, I'm happy to try to answer it. But for the council's benefit, for Mr. Atkins' benefit, for the public's benefit, that's the enforcement mechanism that's in here. That's the way it's written, the way it is. It's not recreating the wheel. It's not specific to this act, this bill. It is simply utilizing municipal infraction provisions that are allowed by state law and that are consistent with other municipal infraction provisions that the county council and the county code has allowed in the past.
But the state's not mandating that we create a law or enforce this, right?
I guess, I will defer to Mr. Hastings, but my understanding is the state merely adopted legislation that allowed counties to provide for legislation like this. They're not mandating it, they're simply permitting it.
They call that enabling legislation.
Right.
So in theory, someone has bamboo on their property for the past 20 years. We enact this, then we can tell them they have to maintain it, how to maintain it. If they don't, they can be fined.
That's the purpose. I mean, I don't want to speak for Mr. Hastings or Ms. Stribling. The way I envision this legislation, the intent is that if you have an existing invasive bamboo plot, the county's role in this would be to try to make sure that that plot is not being allowed to, that area is not being allowed to extend and impact neighbors and that reasonable, that the property owner on which it exists has taken reasonable efforts to try to maintain it. If I recall, at the, at the meeting where this was originally discussed, Mr. Atkins spoke up and if I recall correctly, I think Mr. Atkins said he has some on property that he owns. My understanding is that he, I think, plows, cuts it and plows it. I don't want to misstate that. That's what I understood. From my perspective, if I was the attorney in Mr. Wilbur's office enforcing that and Mr. Atkins told me, "I go out every year and I plow it up and I try to cut it," to me, that's, that's trying to control it. If you want to main, if you want to address Mr. Atkins' concerns, you may want to modify the definition that relates to effective upkeep. To me, that would be the provision in here that you may want to consider amending to better define, to expand on, to do whatever relates to effective upkeep so that somebody in Mr. Atkins' situation is not, is protected. But, you know, the intent of this, whether council decides to pass it or not, the intent is that if I have a property, my neighbor has a plot of invasive bamboo, I don't want that the neighbor's invasive bamboo coming onto my property becomes my problem. And the purpose of this is to effectively provide laws to establish rules and regulations as to how that's supposed to not happen. So again, I have no, I don't vote, I'm not in favor or not in favor of it. I just want to make sure you all understand the enforcement provisions are not, they're not unique to this. They are using municipal infraction provisions and that goes in front of a district court judge and the district court judge is going to decide, number one, whether there's, whether the person is in violation of the statute. And second, if they are in violation, what the punishment's going to be. And as an aside, in my experience, most often the courts, they basically are not interested in fining people for this. They basically want to, they are basically looking for a mechanism to get the, to have the property owner remediate or address the situation. And as long as the property owner is making efforts to remediate, the court, in my experience, is happy to have that happen and pushes the enforcement person to be reasonable in the way that's done. Obviously, that depends on the particular judge you're going to have, but that's my experience in Wycomico County.
Thank you, Mr. Benson.
I have a question.
Mind if I, if I open it up first just?
Let me ask this question. So in this law, I've been reading it, it says, if you have bamboo on your property already and it's been there for 20 years and it's not, it's not bothering anybody else, is that going to be against the law the way this is written? It's not creeping in another way?
It's good enough. Let Josh begin the process and state exactly what he's attempting to do today.
Yeah, so just, I know there's folks in the room who don't know anything about this. I haven't heard this, so I want to make sure that everyone understands where it's coming from. So once again, this, this is an issue that started in the legislature in 2023. The Maryland, the state legislature said, they want to give, they want to address this issue. Obviously invasive species across the board are a major issue. They are a cancer on the environment. And I'm not, and to be clear, I'm not just talking about things like bamboo, but obviously there's, there are literally, you know, more than 100 other ones that are in the county that are serious issues of plant species alone. We've got, by the way, if anyone hasn't been paying attention, for some of our rivers, they're about 95% choked with invasive blue catfish. So we are absolutely facing a serious environmental cancer of which are invasive species. That's what they are. So the state legislature said, hey, we want to allow counties the ability to address this in some sort of way. This was brought forward, of course, the natural, the folks that brought this up, the Wycomico County Natural Resources Conservation Advisory Committee, which I should mention, we have Dr. Stribling and Jared Parks are both members in case anyone even wanted to come up. But I'll say, what they brought up, brought forward was basically saying, hey, this is an issue. What if we started thinking through drafting up legislation? What would that look like? So, and then that includes, of course, just saying that we, of course, can't, no one's selling invasive bamboo, no one's planting invasive bamboo. And then, by the way, there's a difference here. Not all, you know, not all plants, in this case bamboo or others, not all of these are bad, just certain ones are invasive. So we tried to keep it very limited to the genus Philostachys. But basically, as Mr., as Jim and so many others know, you know, it is a growing cancerous problem. It does not stop. It does not listen. It doesn't tell you whose property is whom's. It just keeps on going. Same thing with ivy, same things with, you know, Chinese wisteria, so many others. So the thought process is, given what, what the state of Maryland said that we could do it in Wycomico, we could just limit to simply, let's just keep, we could just keep it very simple. Can't plant it, can't sell it. What the county had brought up, but the attorneys and other folks have said, okay, well, you know, you're not really, essentially, you're not stopping the problem from that, right? It's still, it's still going to grow. The bamboo in Mardella is still going to keep on going, right? It's not going to stop. So how do you then address the issue? And then who's going to address the issue? If it's on, you know, if it's on someone's property and they're limiting it to their property, then theoretically they could do that. But as we know, we've got folks who have planted bamboo on their property and it's now come into Wycomico County property. And so now we as taxpayers have to get rid of doing that. And in fact, Mr. Parks who's here helped run the PRISM, the partnership for regional invasive species management. That was a whole other issue, as you all know. We had to pay for that in, in the parks, you know, in Pemberton Park to try, the different, wasn't just bamboo, they had a lot of invasive species. So the question is, we could simply just say, hey, no, we simply don't, don't want it here, don't sell it here, fine. We can keep it very limited there, no fines, no infractions or other things. The legal folks are basically saying, well, you kind of need some sort of a mechanism because otherwise it's just going to keep on getting worse and worse and worse. And so that's kind of the thought process to how this came forward. Maybe, you know, listening to the comments of folks, you know, maybe the simple thing to do is just to say, we don't sell it, don't plant it. But at some point in time, it's not going to stop. The cancer that is already here is going to continue to grow into neighbors' properties and others. And so the question is then, who then has to pay for it? Because someone else choose to be, you know, choose to do an activity that was then harmful to others, you know, it's hard to then, hard to then have a process to then get somebody else to go pay for it, to remediate it. And it is not easy to remediate. As folks have mentioned, it's, you know, you've got, you can use herbicides or other kind of things, it doesn't really stop it. And the last thing I'll say on this, and maybe I'll invite Dr. Stribling and maybe Mr. Parks, if you want to come up just for any questions there. But last thing I'll say on this is that, you know, when you have, I remember, I remember growing on our farm, we used, people used to complain about the Japanese beetles. Why do we have Japanese beetles? Well, they're thriving because we have plenty of plants that the Japanese beetles are going to be used to, including, you know, they may hang out on the Japanese maple, they go into, you know, you've gotten other plants that are, that they're, you know, we eventually have been accidentally establishing their habitat so that they thrive. So we've got a lot of other invasive plants or invasive animals that come along with those invasive plants. So, and it's not simple, and also the issue, of course, that many people have brought up, there's been issues anywhere you see a patch of bamboo, usually find mosquitoes because bamboo is very good at holding water in certain ways. There's other issues that it holds termites or other kind of things. So there's a lot of folks across the state have been trying to figure out, how do we actually address the issue? I think by us at least taking a first step of saying, no, we don't plant it, don't sell it, I think that would be helpful. Even a member of the Natural Resources Conservation Advisory Committee at last week's meeting was saying, oh, my family member was just telling me they were going to plant bamboo. And where she's like, no, no, don't do that. But the folks there didn't know and they were, they were going to go buy it and plant it. So I think at least taking that first step would be helpful. But the part that had been added on to this, and by the way, this is not legislation yet, just still open work session, just still thinking through what it looked like. That's all been the fines. I don't think anyone, I'm sure, I think I can take a moment to speak for NRCAC and say that that Conservation Advisory Committee, that they're not in the business. No one wants to see anyone fined or anyone, and most, anyone I've talked to in the council, nobody wants, or in the county, the planning and zoning, nobody wants to go down that route, that route. But at the end of the day, you know, how do you stop it? And I don't have a good answer for that unless we go through like we do with every other municipal infraction or other kind of situation like that. So I think at a bare minimum, just for me speaking as one member, I think at a bare minimum, just saying that, don't plant it, don't sell it, that's something that Wycomico County thinks is important. I think that at least gets us closer. But at the end of the day, if we don't have an enforcement mechanism, we can continue to continue to see this issue grow because it literally is a growing problem.
Jeff, you have a comment?
Just a what-if scenario. I didn't see anything in here if there was a homeowner who was on fixed or low income, physically or financially unable to deal with this. Are there any resources that could help them out other than potentially having a lien put on their house?
As I say, I did mention last time, I know we was a little hectic at the meeting at the civic center when we first brought this up, but we've got a really thriving, I mean, a really, really great thriving environmental nonprofit community and other folks who are, and including our agricultural community who does not want this on their land and only makes it harder for them to do their jobs. They are, you know, they are willing to be extra helpful as much as possible in order to remove it. There are folks who go out, there are what we call weed warriors and others who will go out of their ways to try to pull these out. But this legislation doesn't have anything specific for, or this draft of what could be legislation, doesn't have anything specific that addresses that specific need. But I think that's a really good thought and concern.
You know, we're all living in a struggling economy and it's not looking like it's going to improve overnight. I'd hate to see somebody who's physically or financially unable to deal with this problem and it is a problem to end up in court or worse.
I'd like to ask a question. What does it look like? How do people know they got bamboo on their land?
It's like a fishing pole. It looks like a fishing pole.
They used to make bamboo fishing poles.
They used to make, use them to make fishing poles out of, little round. Maybe we should, maybe we should have a field trip somewhere. Everybody will know what it looks like.
I'll look it up. And second, and secondly, the other thing is we have one code enforcement officer in this county.
With a lot of the problems.
There's no way it's going to be enforced because they have other quality of life issues in this county, like yards that have 20 cars, untagged cars, the RVs where people living in them, trash in their yard, bags of trash in their backyard, plumbing issues, those kind of things. So something that nature has brought.
Nature didn't bring it, humans brought it.
Well, whoever brought it. I think that would be the last thing on the totem pole unless he gets another person to help him with all the other things he has to do. So I'm going to look it up. I'm going to Google it and see what bamboo looks like, make sure I don't have any in my yard.
Shane, you know, I could get behind the plant, don't plant, don't sell, but the way this is written, I mean, I couldn't get behind it. I just can't see us going out to a property owner that's had bamboo on their property for 10 years and start threatening, if you don't do this, you don't do that, we're going to fine you, you're going to end up in court. I mean, I remember since I was a child, bamboo was here. And, I mean, don't take this wrong, Josh, but until you brought it up, I didn't hear that we had a bamboo problem around here, maybe in the state. But, I mean, if you wanted to rewrite this or change it to don't plant, don't sell, but I just don't like the thought of issuing citations to the citizens of this county because they buy a piece of property that's got some bamboo on it. And as, and as far as property lines, I get that bamboo is invasive, but couldn't you say the same thing about any other plant as far as blowing onto someone's property? If they're not mowing it, if they're not disking it, you know, a tree is going to grow, you know, from seeds, whether it's clover on the ground, it's going to spread, whether it's grass on the ground, it's going to spread. Now, I know those things aren't invasive, but they're going to spread too, to the property owners.
Yeah, and of course, some plants are, have beneficial, you know, like dandelions, they're not, they're not native here. They were brought here to make tea, you know, a couple hundred years ago by the English, right? You know, but they do have technically, they have benefits. Bees do like them. They have, you know, their pollinators can get some things out of them, not a whole lot, but, but other things, obviously, as you point out, you know, are not that way. Some things actually make things a whole lot worse. They bring in other invasive pests. Some of the things are poisonous. Some things have, you know, there's a whole line of things that make it worse. So it's certainly not even, but I think the more that we can just say as a county, you know, this is a county where you don't dump trash, this is a county where you don't dump invasive species, or you don't plant them, we don't want them here. Because it, you know, if you took out everything in here that says invasive bamboo and you substituted that with, you know, discarded mattresses and other kind of things, you know, other trash, right? The only difference is it keeps on growing. It multiplies by itself. It doesn't stop. So in many ways, it's like, it's an issue just like trash, except that, you know, it just keeps growing on its own.
If you decided you wanted to amend it, if that's what we would have to do, I mean, I would vote for it, but no, I can't say the way it's written.
I think, I agree with Shane that, you know, as far as no person should sell it and no person should plant it, I agree that because you're helping to allow it to spread. But it's not so much the same as trash because we all know what to do with a mattress. You throw it away and hopefully you do that at the landfill and you don't do that on Ethel Road. But you know how to address it. I still can't get beyond what Mr. Atkins has stated on more than one occasion, what Ms. Sigur suggested today. And that is, I agree with the fact that we want to implement some type of enforcement to comply, but what we're overlooking is whether there is the ability for individuals to comply. You know, as was stressed many, many times before, this is not a very easy plant to get rid of. Some people probably don't even know that they have it and then to be subjected to trying to get rid of it, I just don't, I don't know if that's, that's the best route that we should be taking, I think, as a council and as a government body, we should be, I think, maybe more community friendly and possibly look at means by which we could fund county measures to help eradicate this bamboo. If it's going on to people's properties with their permission or maybe, you know, if we have to do it, I don't know how you would do it without their permission, but I'm sure they would want that to happen, to help that out. But it's no different than what we're doing right now with mosquitoes and gypsy moths. The mosquitoes is not, you know, that's not a, that's not costing the taxpayers any money because it's self, it's funded. But... taxpayers any money because it's self, it's funded. But the gypsy moths, we spend about $35,000 a year to help eradicate gypsy moths. So I think we should consider that maybe as a budget issue in the coming year to make a concerted effort to address the issue with this particular type of bamboo and possibly get into the whole idea of the Chinese wisteria. Because that is, that is-
That is my bane of my existence.
Yeah, that's a greater threat, I think, than this bamboo. I think the Chinese wisteria is greater. And we know what it's causing us to try to take care of at Pemberton Park. So, that would be my recommendation, that we maybe gear it towards what type of funding we could put into place to begin an eradication program and leave this with, that they can't grow it and they can't plant it, or they can't sell it to keep them from defeating our purpose.
Yeah, okay.
You know, a few years ago, we sat here and discussed, before some of the, John, you were here, Josh may have been, about buffers for poultry farms. You know, we've got to plant trees, you know, create buffers to keep, you know, protect our neighbors. I get a call, I think it was Sunday, from a poultry farmer, and they pay attention to what's going on in the county. And they said, you know, my buffer, my buffer's bamboo on one side of my chicken house. That's what I'm using. Been there, been there for 30 years, you know? And I'm not going to say where that is because I'm sure somebody's going to be out in the country riding around trying to find this individual. But they say it's about 400 foot long, alongside a ditch, and the neighbors are tickled to death that it's there. I don't, I don't understand. You know, now, talk about invasive species. Let's talk about wire grass. You know, wire grass was brought over here, I think, to stabilize the roads years ago, you know, and planted alongside the roads. And that's, that's invaded all the fields, you know, farmers have to spray for that all the time. Pine trees, you know, you've got a pasture next to a pine forest, you know, when the pine cones spread open, you know, they float over into a pasture and farmers have to cut them down. But the big problem here, I think, is a lot of people don't know they even got bamboo. And if, if somebody goes out and, you know, we talk about affordable housing, okay? And I won't get into all the ins and outs about that, you know, the new regulations that's come along. But say somebody goes out and buys a lot and they want to build a house, oh, they got to go through the septic system issue and, you know, all the permitting. Then they find out, oh, there's some bamboo on this quarter acre I bought, so I got, I'm in trouble for that now. There's just another issue. Like I say, you know, don't import it, don't plant it, I'm fine with that. But we went out and tried to enforce people to move it. A lot like say, somebody owns 200 or 300 acres of land, they might even know they have bamboo on their property. Woodland especially. If you ended up with a piece of woodland with bamboo completely in the back of it off of a right of way, it might cost thousands of dollars to get equipment in there to eradicate it. There's just, there's just so much, so much to this that it would be derog- yeah, I don't know. I can't support it the way it is.
I think, then I just, I guess then add on to that. I mean, I think I would then like to move forward with striking the rest of this where it says, you know, all about the enforcement side of this. And let's just introduce the legislation. I'd like to move forward and reason legislation, then just to keep simply prohibition, no one sell it, no one plant it. And then, you know, we can keep it simple that way. And then, you know, Wycomico County, we got a lot of really positive attention across the entire state for the work that we did a couple of years ago. You know, I went to Mako and they're actually talking about the, you know, the summer conference, and folks around the rest of state are learning from us what we do. I like the idea that Wycomico County is a place where, you know, that we stop invasive species. This is something we say that we don't want. So, I think keeping it simple makes sense. And I don't, I don't want to, of course, let me back it up. And that's horrible for me. As a committee member, as the Wycomico County Natural Resources Conservation Advisory Committee, I don't know if they have any extra thoughts or anything they want to say on this. But otherwise, I think just-
I'd like to share something.
Yes, sir.
Jared's actually more educated on invasive species than I am. We, our committee has spent a lot of time on invasive species. And I completely understand the concerns. This is not a gotcha kind of thing. This is not, oh, wow, you've gotten, you've had this bamboo for 40 years, we're going to drop the hammer on you, you got to go to court. But we did have a citizen come to us who had a neighbor, an absentee neighbor, who for six years hadn't even set foot on his property. And his house, his neighbor's house is completely choked by bamboo. You can't even get to the back door. And it's coming on to his property. And he has tried, he has to mow it, you know, all the time. But because it's not maintained at all on his neighbor's property, he can't, he can't even keep up with it. You know, this is happening right across the street from me. There's a huge plot of bamboo. And the folks who bought that piece of property came in and decided to try to eradicate. And they're gradually doing it. You know, it's not easy. It takes time. But it's not impossible. I think that the objective here on our committee's part, because we are, you know, we've been working on invasive species for a long time of all sorts. And I agree, wisteria is far worse. But this is something that you don't have to worry about seeds moving, you know, it's totally vegetative movement. But it moves very fast and very far. And it excludes everything else. It kills all the trees that it grows around. So, what we'd like to see is just that the county people become aware. Because Ms. Shane doesn't even know what it looks like, you know, and yet, this is a cancer. It is a cancer for our environmental species. So, we need to be responsible in that sense. And just an educational program, I'd like, I think, I think you're right. I looked at this the first time and said, no way this council's going to pass a $1,000 fine. That's just not going to happen. But we have got to get the county aware of what we're facing. And because there are other invasive species legislation that's coming forward, this is not the, not the end of it. And if we could, I think, get, maybe get some kind of a task force together with Mr. Atkins and other folks who can come up with solutions to how do you educate the public. And yes, I love the idea of a fund, treating this like the gypsy moth. A lot of us don't know what gypsies moths are, and don't care, and don't think they're a problem. You know, why does that matter when we have all this other stuff going on? Well, we spend a lot of money on that. And rightly so. So, but I did want you to know that we, the reason that we were trying to address the problem with existing plots was because it does affect people's property values. And this man has no recourse right now. There is nothing he can do to make his neighbor do anything.
Did you say he cuts his grass, like every, he has to cut it every couple of weeks?
I don't know how, he has, if you live next door to bamboo, you know, shoots grow like that far in one day.
And they're hard.
One day.
You don't want to step on one.
Yeah, no.
So, you know where New Hope Church is in Willard? All right, that's the church I grew up in. There's bamboo right behind the church. Us kids used, I'm 48. When I was probably 10, we were planting that bamboo. Now, the grass gets cut at the church probably once a week, twice a week. But it's never like grown right up to the church back door. There's always been grass there.
They mow it.
So, I guess my question to you is, if the adjoining property owner is maintaining their property, cutting their grass?
They're not. They're not maintaining it at all.
The one, the people you're talking about? So, of course, no matter what, if you don't maintain it, whatever's planted there is going to move. So, isn't it, isn't it somewhat the responsibility of the property owner?
You mean the one who came to us? Or the one-
So, if you have whatever, pine trees, bamboo, whatever on your property, and my property's right beside you, if I don't cut my grass-
Oh, he cuts his grass. That's not the problem. It's the, the property owner who owns the bamboo, it, the bamboo is killing trees on his, so this is Joe. Let me, let me give him a different name. Marshall. Marshall has this property. And he hasn't even set foot on the site for six years or more. And the trees that were on this property, very large maple trees and other species have been killed by the bamboo. They're falling on Frank's property over here. Frank's the one who came to us. Frank mows, cleans, does everything on his property, but he is not able to keep up the damage that's being caused by the bamboo next door because it is growing so fast. You'd have to mow every, I mean, it may be a different species of bamboo, I don't know, but-
That may be the case. I'm not a bamboo expert.
It's a wetter site, maybe, but-
There's a few hundred different species of bamboo.
There are a lot of species. And I have seen it, like, there's a, there's a church on the way to Salisbury on Nanticoke Road.
Yeah.
You know, they mow that roadside and it's kind of contained there. But there are other places where, I mean, I've seen it across the street from me. It's killing trees. It's, you can't even get in the house that it grew up around, which is abandoned. So, it's just, it's an educational thing more than, I really don't see a point in levying heavy fines. But I do think that education and outreach and assistance is a good idea. And just getting people to understand the threat that it poses.
I would say, you know, also incumbent on other people, like, the same thing is costing me money. So, your choice to plant bamboo shouldn't cost me my time and energy to fix the problem that you put on my property. I don't think, anyway.
But is it?
It is. It would. I mean, otherwise, I have to keep everything on my yard, whether I want to or not, as yard, as lawn. Because you've created something next to me that's going to make me only do that. I have no other choices because I've got to keep cutting it to keep your bamboo out of my yard.
If you had a wooden-
If it's a maple, my expectation is that's a natural tree. It's anywhere on the landscape. A squirrel could have brought it in. Anything could have brought it in. It's not an invasive species. That's an aggressive native. It's a first succession species. It's a native species here. You'd expect it. I don't expect bamboo to be growing on my property because it's not from here. It's from China, right? And so, you brought it, and now it's my problem. I don't really believe it should be my problem. You should contain it and keep it on your property because you brought it here and it's not naturally occurring. Because naturally occurring, and you planted a maple tree, I'm going to have maple trees. That's fine. I can, I'll weed them. But it's not the same, it's just not the same issue. And invasive species is a very specific term. You know, we throw it around and say, you know, pine trees, pine trees are not a native, or are a native species. Loblawli pine, white pine, Virginia pine, they're all from here, right? Now, you bring another pine tree from somewhere else that is a true invasive species, then again, my expectation is, I don't have to deal with that because it's not from here. But then you brought it here and now I have to deal with it.
I think what we could do in order to move this forward, because we're running out of time on this, I appreciate Josh bringing this to our attention and his willing to, you know, sort of cooperate with everyone. The, from what I sense, what we want to do is we want to keep the prohibition in there under 163 to A and B. No person shall sell it, no person shall plant it. And then, we would be removing Section C as well as 163.3 Implementation Administration, we would remove A and B. But we could still keep 163.4 enforcement and penalty. Because the enforcement and penalty could still remain on people who are selling it and planting it, deliberately selling and planting it. Would that be satisfactory?
Wait a minute. Suppose they've got bamboo on their property and they want it gone? And it's going to cost them, say it's going to cost them $1,000 an acre to get it removed. We'll just use that figure. And then some guy comes along and says, hey, if you sell me that bamboo, I'll give you $1,000 for it. So, we've killed two birds with one stone. The bamboo's gone and the guy's got $1,000 for it. Why should we prohibit somebody from, you know, I mean, people may like their bamboo. Did you ever think of that? Some people may like it.
Well, still, you don't want to, you don't want to propagate it. So, you don't want that person to sell it to somebody else, period. Because the only purpose of selling it, Joe, is that that person can plant it somewhere else.
No, they're not. They're going to cut it off and use it for furniture.
They make furniture out of it, John.
Ask you to sell you, sell them your bamboo. John, they make furniture out of bamboo.
I don't think they make it out of, by the stockings.
I get that, but I don't think that's happening in Wycomico County.
No, I know. I understand what you're saying. Okay. No selling for propagation, no selling live plants, no selling in nurseries, you know, not, yeah, you sell bamboo furniture. I've got a bamboo floor. It's great stuff. But I think that's a whole different-
It's also not an industry here.
Yeah, it's not an industry. I don't think you're going to have anybody-
It may be somebody's hobby to build bamboo furniture. I don't know. You know, what we're trying to legislate, here's an act of God. You know, God put the bamboo grows because God lets it grow.
But if you, yeah, if you, if you wanted to buy the bamboo that's growing in my yard, cut it down and take it away. That's not, I don't think that's what we're talking about. We're talking about selling it for planting. So, I don't, I don't think that's the same issue.
What about the rest of the council, from what was proposed as far as keeping A and B and, and keeping the enforcement and penalty for anyone that violates A and B, and striking the rest of it in regards to trying to make people accountable for it who absolutely have no ability to control it?
I'm with A only, just planting it. You know, if somebody wants to sell their bamboo, they can sell it, as far as I'm concerned.
Would then be able to be sold at Lowe's?
Excuse me? I can't hear.
And then be able to be sold at Lowe's or your nursery stores and stuff, is a live plant?
If you want to, you know, whatever. I mean, I don't know that Lowe's would sell it, but anyway.
They do. You can go get it right now.
That's kind of the problem.
It's the problem.
Yeah. I think that's the key piece we're trying to understand is that we basically-
So, we've got businesses, we've got businesses selling this now?
Yeah, it's been selling it for years. That's the way they got it on the church ground is they bought it somewhere, I'm sure.
So, now we're going to cut businesses out of being able to do business.
Not on the church grounds, on the adjoining, the adjoining property.
We've seen the damages that Chinese wisteria is doing. I've seen the damages that bamboo, and I know how bamboo spreads. And I don't think it's going to, I don't think it's going to hurt anybody. I don't think we're really taking anybody's personal privileges away to say, hey, you can't sell bamboo, period. I think they'll be able to live with-
Maybe Lowe's something, maybe Lowe's will think that, you know.
Mr. Atkins will let them cut it down.
Unfortunately, sometimes we have to make hard decisions, Joe. And I'm pro-business just like you. But if it's invasive species, if it's such as this bamboo, I don't think Lowe's should be selling it. They can make money off their lumber.
Well, how does that, I mean, if Lowe's is selling it, I mean, this is going to be a problem, right? I mean, what are we going to do? Send them a letter and say, cease and desist, stop selling it?
There is, there have been suggestions. We've talked about this in our committee too, that you don't want to take Jeff's greenhouse and say, here's one of your biggest lawmakers and how you can sell it with your value. And there may be a way to grant other disanements saying, you sell it, it's something that you're working on, and then you stop. But there's legislation now that was passed last year by the state that prohibits this. We don't adopt it, it's already done. The state is prohibiting every invasive species, not just bamboo. And this is kind of getting out in front of that a little bit and giving us a trial run in how we implement it.
I'm totally fine with the, don't plant, don't sell. Totally fine with it. But before we enact legislation, we need to make sure we're covering all of our grounds.
I agree. I agree.
And I didn't know until you just said it, that our local Lowe's is selling it. Well, of course, people are going to say, I just bought this last month, or three months ago from Lowe's. Now you're wanting to tell me I can't plant it.
Delaware has been there for a couple of years now.
Yeah. It's actually supposed to be labeled as an invasive species. Be careful where you plant it, how you plant it, it'll, that's the state law.
But they haven't been doing-
Apply with it and don't display that, which is an enforcement issue. But yeah, there are some laws that had been to keep people aware and educated on what they're putting on. You know, before it was like, oh, it's an aggressive species. Well, aggressive species equals probably invasive, right? It's a high productive species or whatever. They're the keywords to get you to buy it. Blooms a lot, you know, could be, creates a lot of seed that then spreads across the world. But instead of doing that, they were supposed to say, this is an invasive species and it spreads out of control, things like that.
What we could do, again, because we have to move on, we're running a tight schedule here. I'd say we have an idea of what the council in general does want to keep in and wants to take out. With Joe's recommendation, no, no person shall sell invasive bamboo. Maybe there could be some stipulation unless it has the authority of the county, you know, the county approves that sale, something to that. I'm just pulling it out of thin air. But some means by which we know it's controlled and it can't become a reckless situation, especially like, you know, you say furniture and things, Joe, I hadn't thought of that. But if we could leave it with that, is that, is that okay with everyone there to do it? And maybe at the same time, trying to figure out possibly what the county could do, maybe even legal restrictions on what the county could do if they had to go in and to protect Frank from James as far as enforcing, you know, taking out bamboo that's invading another neighbor's property. I know it's a touchy one, but possibly look into that and maybe also look at what we could do on funding this as a county. So, those are the issues I think we can continue with. But are we okay with trying to-
You're still talking about enforcement action?
Not enforcement. Enforcement such as trying to protect someone else's property when you have a delinquent owner, someone who doesn't live on a property, but is allowing their bamboo, their invasive bamboo to grow into their neighbors. At some point in time, we may have to go in there and eradicate it just to, as a safety measure. I don't think it's really a situation where it's a benefit to the owner. They don't seem to care, but the county may need to go in. But again, that's going to be a real touchy one for legal to figure out. I'm not saying we do that now. I'm just saying, let's leave this now and strike what the council seems to want to strike as far as making individuals personally responsible. But just get the initial measures in place right now, and then we would have another work session on this. session on this.
I think that sounds good. Yeah, I know, and by the way, I'm just saying it again, no one, no one wants to go out of their way to harm someone, you know, we don't want to be finding people or anything like that, but we've got some neighbors who, God bless them, I mean, they live there, they died, their kids inherited the property, they don't know it, they're not managing it, they're from across the bridge. I mean, there's a number of, by the way, I've gotten over 70 calls since we originally, when we introduced this, it was on WMDT or BUC. And even the city, the city park said they have an issue. So I had gotten a ton of people who said, hey, I just happened to, we inherited a property, my neighbor inherited the property, the other. So we just want to be able to say, let's just get to this point where we're not planting it, we're not, you know, we're not allowing it to, we're turning off the tap and then.
So let's make sure we know what we're voting for. Can you say the whole thing? All I'm, yeah, all I'm saying is that we would retain the portion that says, no person shall sell invasive bamboo with the, with the qualification that we may try to figure out some way to allow the sale based on what Joe says, if it's overseen by maybe some county agency. The second part is no person shall plant invasive bamboo, period. The sections we're looking at striking right now would be the next section, no person shall allow invasive bamboo to grow on their property without effective upkeep because of what's been pointed out to us, the difficulty of being able to eradicate it, as well as the next section of implementation administration for the same purposes. What we would keep again would be 163 four enforcement and penalty, but that would be in reference to those that may sell or plant deliberately. So we'll keep the enforcement, but that's only on the people who are directly violating what would be county law. And this is only for the second phase of a work session, Shane, this isn't.
John, people are responsible for their own property. If somebody's bamboo is creeping onto their property, it's, it's their responsibility to take care of it, not the people that the bamboo's already on. I'm not, you know, I'm not, I'm responsible for my property, okay? If I've got a neighbor that's got wire grass or got pine trees or has got bamboo and it creeps onto my property, I'm the one that has to go cut it and that's my responsibility. It's no different than somebody living in an area with a pine forest and pine trees blow off that tree into somebody else's yard. You know, it's an act of God, you know, things happen, you know, trees fall across property lines. People within, in the insurance business go through this all the time. If somebody's bamboo is creeping across on somebody else's property, it's those people that own that property that's a responsibility for them to take care of their own property. Same way it is with people being responsible for cutting their grass. So, you know, I mean.
No different. I'll give you an example, people that's got nice yards, you got a neighbor that's got full of dandelions. They keep blowing in your yard, you're getting dandelions, you're getting aggravated because they won't take care of their dandelions. They don't care about their dandelions. So you got to take care of it.
The only difference is, this is specifically. I mean, this is a camel under, getting his nose under the tent and I understand what's happening here. This is just the first step of what they want to do.
And to be clear, there's a very, very strong difference between a naturalized species, a native species and an invasive species. This is an invasive species.
Yes, the bamboo is coming in another person's property and killing their trees and things like that, it's a little bit different than, and I get the dandelion because I've had a problem myself, but it's a little different than a dandelion. You know, when you have bamboo just invading your property and killing your trees, there's almost no way, no way to address it unless you go to the source to kill.
They cut it down, it wouldn't have the problem.
Well, again, let's move on with this and we'll certainly have another work session to review it. So I think we've got some, we're not all the way there yet, but we've got some compromise underway.
No, I'm sure, I just want to say I appreciate the NRCAC, the committee for being here, the folks that are being here. They've been very, very thoughtful, they brought this up in January, so we're talking about, they've been discussing this, we're now for seven, six months or so. And I do appreciate the hard work. The county, because of Mr. Parks here and others, county got a lot of great attention across the state for the work that's done for invasive species removal. And Mr. Parks and others don't get enough respect for that, so I do appreciate that. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Next item on the agenda is design funding for the public library. Mr. Hirschberger, good to see you here.
Good to be here. My name is Seth Hirschberger, I'm the executive director for the public library, president, council members. I'm here to talk about a request related to an adjusted timeline for a project that I know and am grateful to know is important to this council, which is the relocation of our main library location from downtown to what was the Ward Museum Shoemaker Pond facility. I know that there's a grant that's very important to all of us that has been submitted, that funding is crucial and this project hinges on the grant being successful, we're aware of that. And we submitted the grant early so that the reviewers could look at it and give us advice on how to strengthen the grant. Two pieces of feedback they gave us, the two biggest changes that we made is that we, rather than asking for everything, the $8 million in one year, they recommended that we split it over two years and request part of the funding in FY '25 and part of the funding in FY '26. So that's what we did when we submitted the grant. We submitted, it has a timeline that extends into FY '27, but there's two phases of the project so that we can still adhere to the original timeline of when we would be finished with the old library downtown and be able to move out, begin operations in the new location, but that the project wouldn't be completely done, phase two of it would occur in another part of the building. That's how we presented it, they said a smaller grant is more likely to be funded. Also, we're concerned about the timeline because it looks too optimistic. And with state capital funds, if you don't expend them in the cycle of the grant, you lose them. If you don't have, if you don't have an invoice to show for that. So that's a way that a lot of state grants end up not being funded, not because they weren't awarded, because, but because the agency failed to spend the money. The other thing they recommended we do is get started on design as soon as possible because the design phase often is, what can take as long as anything and can delay the start of the project. So my request today, and this would be outside the grant, so I'm, I'm asking the council to take this step independently from, from the grant and to provide $330,000 in funding. That's a figure that's based on a cash flow and timeline document that the architect firm that we're working with submitted with the grant to the agency and that would then put us on a really solid footing to have most of the design completed so that when we do get into the cycle of the grant and the schedule, we could, we could break ground right away and start spending the state's money.
Any questions?
A question. You're seeing design, you're not thinking about tearing any part of the building down, are you?
No, but we are making major renovations. We need to make major renovations to the interior of the building because a lot of it is partitioned off as a museum. And there's some other changes that we need to make.
Okay, it's going to be internal. Okay.
Yes, I guess that was kind of my question, is it, I know you don't even have basic things like sidewalks out there, does this, is this only internal or is this external internal?
It's only internal. The scope of the project is inside the building.
If we want to move forward with this, Mr. Hurley, would we just, I guess this would be a resolution that we would need to?
Yeah, so it would come back in the form of a resolution, but it is a capital project, so it would require a public hearing.
Everybody okay with this? Real good? Okay, if you could initiate that? Yes, Pam?
Pamela Lynn, Finance Director. One statement I wanted to make is the documentation you have in the work, in the work session talks about it coming out of contingency. I'm requesting that when we submit this, that we take it out of fund balance. That original documentation was written when we were talking about doing it in fiscal '24. And remember, we had over a million dollars remaining in contingency at the end of fiscal '24. We are now into fiscal '25, we only have $500,000 and we just appropriated $50,000 of that last work session, or last council meeting. Ultimately, it's still the same place, but my recommendation is instead of using up over half of our contingency at this point in time, use up the fund balance that reverted to fund balance from the '24 and because of not spending last year's contingency. So when you would see the resolution, my, my request would be, the resolution would be use of fund balance and transfer to capital project. And so it would be an increase to revenue and an increase to expense. It wouldn't be a transfer between the two line items.
Are you okay with that? Okay, all right. Thanks for the clarification. If you could, Mr. Hurley, prepare that. Thank you very much. Mr. Hirschberger, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for waiting. Next item on the agenda for a work session is the Frederick Douglass historical marker sign. We have Alita Davis, President of the Preservation Trust of Wycomico. We also have Melissa Leahy, but if you'd like to come forward, Melissa, Circuit Court Administrator.
Thank you for having us here today to talk about this wonderful project.
If you could announce your name, give us your name and your position, starting from my left to the right.
Jim Jackson. Preservation Trust of Wycomico County, Officer, past president of it.
See you.
And historian. Alita Davis, I'm the current president of Preservation Trust.
Melissa Leahy, Court Administrator for the Circuit Court for Wycomico County.
Ray Thompson, I'm a member of Preservation Trust.
Thank you. Alita, we'll give you the floor.
Thank you. About a decade ago, there was a group who started an historic sign project. Bill Wilson and I had spoken to Jake Day many years ago about this and after Linda Dwyer died, I think that the committee just was disbanded. But a couple of years ago, we realized that we still did not have the Frederick Douglass sign in front of our courthouse. What many people don't realize is Mr. Douglass spoke at our courthouse in 1880 in order to raise funds to put a second floor on the, what was at the time, the John Wesley Methodist Episcopal Church. It is now the Charles H. Chipman Cultural Center. And it was being used for a school for black children, I'm sure they were all boys, but it was a school for children and they needed more space. So Frederick Douglass, who was a local of Talbot County, Eastern Shore man, came and stayed with one of our residents, Solomon Houston, who was his host, in order to raise money, selling tickets at 50 cents apiece. And I believe there were a couple hundred people who showed up for that speech that night to raise the money. Now, what, I'm from Pennsylvania, I'm not from this area. He was, Frederick Douglass was a really famous historic figure to me when we were in junior high studying history and even grade school. I had no idea I would one day live in an area that he came from. So anyway, a couple of years ago, our group started talking about getting this sign done. I've been, we've been working on it ever since, calling people, seeing what we had to do to get this sign put in place. And along with this, we decided to begin the historic sign project again. And Frederick Douglass's sign is going to be the first and the most beautiful of the signs. I apologize for the print, my print, print just, you know, got possessed last night about 1:00 in the morning. But this sign is actually going to be made of bronze. And you see at the top, a portrait of Frederick Douglass as he looked the year he spoke at the courthouse. And I think this really is important in light of some of the darker history we had in the 18, well, from, from the time, you know, the Europeans came to this country and through the 20th century. This, this man was so incredible because he came from nothing. He was an escaped slave. He had to hide his identity by changing his last name. And he was actually illiterate, completely illiterate, up until about the age of 14 when he realized if he was ever going to become what he wanted to be, he had to learn to read and he taught himself to read and ended up being the deputy, or excuse me, the marshal of Washington DC. And meeting in the White House and he got to meet Abraham Lincoln about three different times. And I just think it's wonderful. And as an educator, I have talked to teachers and a lot of people in the area, nobody hardly knows that Frederick Douglass was here or spoke at our courthouse. So we, we would like to get this sign done as our first sign in the group of signs we're doing throughout Salisbury and it just happened to fall on county property. So we, we're asking your support in this. We've been raising money. At this point, we haven't had a chance to get any grants. We are working on that for the future. We have approached organizations, local citizens and the other historical groups such as our own in order to get some of the money for this. But we're still lacking about $1,000. And we would like to get this done as soon as possible, hopefully before the end of summer. I have been assured by Gardener Signs, it shouldn't take that long to get it made so that you could plan for ribbon cutting. And I think it's going to be a really big surprise to a lot of people when they see this sign here, having no idea that Frederick Douglass had ever spoken here. And Jim, did you have anything to add about Frederick Douglass or?
No, I don't. You carry on.
Okay.
Leahy, did you want to make any comments from the Circuit Court perspective?
I did just want to note that typically the court does decline any requests for markers on the courthouse lawn, just because of the need both to be impartial and to appear to be impartial. And I understand that this is not intended as a marker that is political as such, but the concern is that we not end up with multiple requests potentially that appear to be competing politically for markers on the courthouse sign. And again, that is not at all meant to diminish Frederick Douglass's contributions to American history and to local history, but it is a concern, not even specifically with this marker alone, but moving forward, what is the criteria for historic? You know, we want to avoid sort of the George Washington slept here mentality when it comes to markers. And again, this is not at all to diminish Frederick Douglass's contributions locally, but it is important as a separate branch of government that we do maintain that independence and that we not appear to support any position. And again, I understand that this is not intended as a position issue, but in our current climate, that is a concern as well, something that we have to consider.
So are you in support of it?
The court would prefer not to have the marker on court property.
That's where he spoke.
I do understand that. And, and I do believe, and this is where it comes to a discussion of where does it rise to historic? Certainly if Frederick Douglass were from Wycomico County or if this were in a larger context, for instance, you know, the Gettysburg Address of Frederick Douglass's speeches. Again, this is not to diminish the work that was done here, but there is a concern, I mean, the fortunate thing is, Wycomico County has had a great deal of history and a lot of things have happened here. We don't want, however, that to end up meaning 16 different signs on the courthouse lawn. And I know that's not being proposed presently.
If I may, Cambridge, I believe, already has a marker for when he spoke there. We already have the state highway signs with that state highway sign in the works, but that does not show a child who's here with their parents that goes and reads that sign and they know who Frederick Douglass is, but they have no idea that the place they live is being shared with this historic figure.
Certainly. And, and something that we have considered, and I've discussed this with the council president as well, the Circuit Court is undergoing a number of renovations right now and as part of that. And as part of that, what we're trying to do is refurbish some of the public spaces to highlight a variety of historic happenings throughout the evolution of the courthouse. The courthouse is, is a great historic building for the county. It was the first official building in Wycomico County and it's undergone a lot of changes. So our clerk of court has done a lot of work to sort of highlight some of that in our hallways. We would like to dedicate a space that is open to the public to do so, again, without necessarily, and again, I understand that this is a single marker. Our concern, and this is, this is not a firm no from the court, we're expressing a concern that there needs to be a very clear criterion moving forward for what reaches the level of historic when it comes to placing markers on the courthouse grounds.
We can appreciate that as well, but I mean, from my perspective, this is a highly historical event, a man of his stature speaking at the county courthouse. I don't know of any other historical event that occurred on this block or on county property or the court's property. So I really don't believe that there's going to be a request for multiple more markers. I think this is isolated to the fact that he did speak here as an international figurehead in his time, and he did speak to a local crowd and actually drew 200 people, which I thought was rather surprising. So that's from my perspective, yes.
May I?
I just want to add on to that. Of course, I happened to be contacted this past, within this past week, there's a group that is of new students that came to, that are, that are just, or come to Washington College. And in doing so, they've got folks that come from Washington College across the country, some locals, but the Washington College folks thought it was very important that they understand the entire eastern shore. So they contacted me as a county representative to come see the place where Frederick Douglass spoke in front of the, so I'm, not only am I going to go give them a tour of the space and I'm going to speak on what I know, they're going to then walk over to the Chipman Center and then we're going to come down and actually see some of the downtown work that's been doing on there. So it's, it's interesting to even bring it up, but this, I would echo the, the Council President. Undoubtedly, I think this individual, as Ms. Leahy and so many others know, this individual was far and above an individual that is the, one of the most revered in our American culture and was adequately said internationally known and respected. And that's a pretty big deal. I, I would still love to know even where Mr. Houston or Houston, you know, where, where he lived and where he stayed that night.
Right.
So much more, but really, I'd be fully in support of this. I think this is different in the sense that it is an individual of such a high stature. And I think it would actually, it was literally bringing people to the county without even having it here. I've got a group of kids and we're going to have local foods here, they're going to come stay and they're going to go to our restaurants, but they're only coming here as part of this.
And I believe there's also a building that is getting ready to have a mural with Frederick Douglass painted on it. That's Beach, they got a grant from Beach to Bay?
Beach to Bay.
Yes. And I, I think it ties in. My, my thought, especially having taught small children, is for those children to be, well, like when we moved here, we walked through downtown such as it was. I never seen such a small downtown, but we walked through the whole area. And for that child to go up to that sign and say, mommy, who is this man? And I think that reading this sign, they probably would go home and do some more research on this person. And I think he's a very inspirational person for children to think this man, you know, he looks like me, maybe I can do this someday.
May I say, may I say something?
Hang on, let me get, go ahead.
You said the court hadn't made their mind up yet whether they wanted to do this. Who makes that decision?
That, that's an interesting question. The courthouse is on county property.
Uh huh.
Typically, the county has deferred to the administrative judge. And it is the court's preference that markers not be placed on the ground, but that is not a firm no. We, we will defer to the county in this instance, but again, there's-
You're talking about the administrative, you're going to refer to the administrative judge?
No, he is willing to defer to the county, but with the note that we would like some additional clarification in the future for what will rise to the level of historic so that there not be kind of a flood of requests from various agencies for markers.
I think we ought to respect the administrative judge on this and get some, get some clarification.
Well, and, and, and let me clarify, that, that is moving forward. It's really a concern that moving forward, we're not approached by multiple other groups asking to erect additional markers. So the, the request is both to your organization and to the council that we really do look to define what will rise to the level of historic when it comes to erecting markers on the courthouse grounds.
And we agree with you on that as far as the future is concerned. We can understand that.
And again, I want to clarify, this is, this is not at all to diminish Frederick Douglass's contributions to history.
May I say something?
Certainly.
I'm the President of the Chipman Foundation. I'm wearing my hat as the Chipman Foundation President. Since he, when he built the second floor, it was not for a school, it was for the sanctuary. The school eventually moved to a warehouse across the street on, across Route 13, Solomon Houston and his follower members of John Wesley Episcopal Church. I think personally, if I had a choice to put something that, the consummate of what Frederick Douglass did, I would request it be put at Chipman Culture Center. That's what I would suggest, although he spoke at the courthouse lawn, but the benefit of that speech was to the culture center. That is what I would do. And, and I think he is, was a great man. He was from Talbot County. He came to, he went to several cities or towns in, on the eastern shore locally. Went to Somerset County, I believe, and spoke. But I appreciate the, the historical, to decide to do that, but since the Chipman Culture Center is the only historical building left in this area. The downstairs, the land was bought in 1837, a slab, a building was built for a school for children, not only boys but girls, and it was a church sanctuary and a meeting place. So that building has a lot of historical and shows a consummate of what African-American people did back in that day, some were even edu, uneducated. So I'm just, if there is a problem, the Chipman Culture Center would be happy to have that marker placed in front of our building. Thank you.
Which is nice, Shane, and I understand that, and there should be some notation at the Chipman Center that, that funds were donated by Frederick Douglass, but I think the purpose of a historical marker is to remind people that a historical event happened at that particular location. Other words, Frederick Douglass spoke in the county courthouse, public property, in the county courthouse to try to raise the funds. And yes, there should be recognition at Chipman as well that they received that benefit. But I think the purpose of the marker is to distinguish to the public that in this building, this historical event occurred.
And there are a lot of people also that wander around that area. I mean, they're all, because it's a beautiful old building and it's a, it's an attractive setting. And I see a lot of people just walking over, sitting on the shade and, and I, I think it would, it would get a lot of notice from that particular-
To me, it's a positive reinforcement as well. I think a lot over the last few years, there's been, a lot of times in, in putting up recognition, et cetera, that there's been some negative influence as far as trying to, trying to, I guess, educate the public. And I get the justification for that. But to me, this is a positive reinforcement, a positive event that occurred, and that I think is so very important to any community to remember the good things that have happened as well.
So, is the, is the council going to adopt a resolution or something regarding, I don't mean a written resolution, but I mean, are you going to have a motion on this or are you just going to take a consensus?
I think it's generally consensus, Mr. Benson, whereas we can decide as to move, to let, allow them to continue to move forward with the blessing of Circuit-
My only suggestion is that when you state what the consensus is and to address the concerns that the court has, that you state that the reason that the council is in favor of placing this on the courthouse property is because this event occurred at the courthouse property. And that's the reason that, that, that the county is in favor of putting it on the courthouse property, to distinguish that somebody comes in next week and wants to put up another plaque for something that didn't happen on the courthouse property so that, you know, five years from now or whatever, the court, the records here reflect in the, in the minutes that the, the reason the court, the county thought it was appropriate to put it specifically on the courthouse property as opposed to that there's a record as to why that occurred.
That's a good point, and that, we have that in the minutes now, we'll keep that in the minutes. So, any other discussion? Are we okay with this?
Mm-hmm.
We're good? We have a consensus to move forward. And Ms. Leahy, we really appreciate your input as well, and you're, you know, the Circuit Court allowing to, to give this council the privilege.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Ms. Davis, Ms. Jefferson.
I did want to mention, so it's, it's not too confusing, since this is bronze, this sign is over $3,300. And we really, we, we've been, as I said, trying to raise money for two years for this without getting a grant, so we just wanted something really special because it was Frederick Douglass.
Well, thank you, we appreciate your efforts as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item we have on the agenda is the poorly work session with the Board of Education. We've often run into this. I think we can power through this.
Yep.
Let's do it.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
So, just a minute to get all of our chairs straight.
If you need to pull any more up, feel free, whatever you need.
Not, not happening. No. Seth's trying to hide back there.
Yeah.
All right, good afternoon, everyone. I want to start with just introductions, so I'll start here on my right.
Good afternoon, I'm Gene Malone, Chairman of the Wycomico County Board of Education.
Mike Stoffer, Superintendent of Schools.
Linda Mullin, District Coordinator of the Wycomico Mentoring Project.
Hi, I'm James Hessen, I'm a people personnel worker and co-coordinator of the Wycomico Mentoring Project.
And also in the audience who will be joining us in just a few moments, we have Mrs. Kim Miles, Assistant Superintendent for Student and Family Services, Dr. Rick Briggs, Chief Academic Officer, and Dr. Brian Rager, Chief Finance and Operations Officer.
Good to see you all.
Good to see all of you as well. So I think, just to review the agenda, we're going to be talking a little bit about the Wycomico Mentoring Project, and that's why we have James and Linda with us this afternoon. Also, on the agenda is the annual report on child well-being, some school construction updates, updates which are exciting, and update on our school system priorities for the 24-25 school year as well. So we're going to go ahead and get started with the mentoring project. Thank you both for being here.
Thank you very much, Dr. Stoffer. Like I said, my name is James Hessen, I'm a people personnel worker for Wycomico County Public Schools, but also my, one of my duties as a sign is the Wycomico Mentoring Project. And if you just give me about 30 seconds of your time, I'm going to pass, Linda's going to pass out some information for you, so you have to keep it. And essentially what Linda's passing out to you is a brief overview of the Wycomico Mentoring Project as it lies right now currently within the school system, and our 23-24 Mentor Guide. You'll find some information in there pertaining to our mentoring program. I will tell you this, is that we're currently working this summer on revamping a lot of our literature, our website is going to have some updated information, including our personal information as well as how we're going to be running the mentoring project moving forward. So if you look within the mentoring guide, there is some information in there that, that isn't necessarily pertaining to what I'm going to be speaking about today. It's just some helpful information as to what goes out to our mentors when they're trained by us and they go out to our schools to visit our mentees. So, first of all, I want to thank Dr. Stoffer for allowing us to come in just for a few minutes to share with you the status of the Wycomico Mentoring Project. This is a project, and I'm not going to speak for my, my counterpart here, but I will, but I don't normally speak for my counterpart, but this is an extremely important opportunity for Wycomico County Public Schools, but it's also near and dear to Linda's heart and my own heart, as well as Tamara Forman. Tamara Forman is not with us today, she's actually our outreach coordinator. This is an extremely important project that we're, that we're expanding on. This is kind of a rebuilding year for us. The Wycomico Mentoring Project started 30 years ago, so this is our actual 30th anniversary this year. And the mentoring project is a part of the Division of Student and Family Services. And that is where Linda and I spend 99.9% of our time, actually all of our time, so to speak, as people personnel workers. And as people personnel workers, we're lucky to be afforded the opportunity to work within the schools. Linda has been an administrator in schools before as, as well as I have. So we feel very fortunate and lucky to be part of this project, but also to be part of the school system as well, working with our students and teachers and administrators. So if you're looking at the slides, I'm going to slide down to the third slide right here where it says the Wycomico Mentoring Project. Just to give you an idea, roughly, when I came to the city council in April of this past year, we had a little over 16,000 students. We graduated about 600 or so of those students, so currently our student numbers are looking at about 15,802 students within Wycomico County. We have about 2,904 staff members, several which are actually mentors within our system as well. That includes our custodians, that includes our teachers. We also have SROs that are actually part of the Wycomico Mentoring Project to mentoring students in secondary and in elementary schools. The Wycomico Mentoring Project itself, right now, as it stands, as of today, has 176 mentors, okay? That is up from just shy of about 25, okay? If I did my math right, I was a history teacher, I was not a math teacher, but math-wise, that is an 1100% increase from September of '23. Now, what that has to do with is that has to do with us getting the, the word out, being at local and public events, being inside the schools and speaking to anyone that will listen. That is our, that's our goal. Our, our goal is a very, very lofty goal, and our goal is to have a mentor for every single student in Wycomico County Public Schools, 16,000 strong. We know that's very lofty, okay? But as I, as I move forward, as I, thank you, as I move forward, I'll explain how we're going to attempt to achieve that. Right now, we have about 72 mentors, and I have on here that we have about 15 to 20 in the queue. And our queue is our application to training queue. So we have about 20 applicants that are out there and we have to start training in the middle of August. So those, those particular people, they're not in our system yet, they have applied and we've done background checks and now we have to move forward with our, with the training of those individuals in the summertime, okay? Unfortunately, we are short of our goal as we intended, because we're, we're trying to show some sort of growth here. We're sitting at about less than 1% of our student population in Wycomico County having a mentor, being part of the mentoring project, okay? But where we've come from is certainly a, a strong position as to where we are going and where we have been this past year and where we're heading. As far as mentoring benefits, the benefits are, are twofold. There's the benefits towards the students, and this is backed up by scholarly research, and there's also a support for the mentors themselves. As you know, if, and each of us have been a benefactor, have a benefactor or have a mentor in, in law enforcement or in leadership or something along those lines that has kind of guided us along through our careers, through our pathway, whatever have you. But for students, the first thing we look at is, we look at the improvement in behavior as, rather than, rather than writing students up and giving them, sending them referrals or, you know, making it more of a punitive thing, the mentoring project actually acts as an intervention for those students, okay? So we can, we can look at behavior improving during the mentoring process. We also look at grades, grade increases also, attendance increases, which we are extremely familiar with when it comes to the attendance side of things, because that's, that's where we live throughout the school year. Self-efficacy, the self-morale, the, the self-improvement really comes about with students. And you also see an increase in social development, whereas perhaps students are, they, they can't, they don't necessarily have the, the backing at home, but they have the backing at school. And not only do they have the backing of their teachers, they also have the backing of their administrators and their mentor when they have to come into the building. For mentors, for us adults, it adds all kinds of stuff to our, to our register. Socialization, we learn patience. If there's anything that is, that is- to our register. Socialization, we learn patience. If there's anything that is consistent is that I've become a more patient educator, working with our elementary school students. It takes, it takes a minute to work things out, but patience is gained, you have a strong sense of community, and that's kind of why we're here today. And we want to make sure that our community foundation is strong, especially going from our elementary school students to our secondary ed. Our process, I'll run you through the process real quick. If you are interested, or if anyone is interested in becoming a mentor for the mentoring project, there is an online application, and I will make sure that I send the entire council all this information as well in PDF and Word versions. There's an application process, there's an online application for employees of the school system, but also for, you know, civilians that are, that want to come in. Once that application is complete, we run a background check that goes through Maryland, Delaware, and also the National Sexual Registry, the Sex Offenders Registry, just to make sure that we're giving high top-quality candidates to our students and make sure everyone stays safe. The training, for original training, is one to one and a half hours. There are a series of Safe Schools videos that we do present on bloodborne pathogens and mandated reporting under the, under the, our Safe Schools. And as mandated reporters, there are certain things we have to do, and our mentors have to do in, if they're a student or they're mentee, discloses any kind of sexual abuse or neglect. We also, we also offer a flexible option where you can come into the school. We ask you to do an hour a week, but if you can do 30 minutes here, 30 minutes there, whatever time you can afford is the time that we're looking for. And we also want to say that too, if you want to come into our schools, you get to pick on where you, where you want to go. If you want to go to elementary schools, pick elementary schools. If you want to go to all the schools, we love that too. You know, we can put you down for every school, every school available. For our mentees, the mentees have to be, they can be assigned by their teacher or their parent. There has to be a permission slip that's also signed by the parent that will be forwarded to our school, whatever school the student goes to, and that will go to the mentor coordinator, who is typically also a community-based representative within the school, okay? Or a school counselor or social worker, okay? So to close out, what we're looking for from Waukesha County Council is we are looking for county employees, including not limited to our, our schools, not limited to our teachers in our schools, but also any other county employees that may be interested in mentoring our students. We are also asking to reach out to your constituents, or you may not have to reach out to your constituents. You may know a handful of people within your constituency, within your district, whose students may have had a rough time this past school year and may, may benefit from having a mentor within the schools. We ask you, if you're having a conversation with one of your constituents, or a friend at church, or whatever, to give them the information, to seek us out. And we can certainly send them the parents the information. We can let the school know that the student needs a mentor. But not only one-on-one mentoring, we also do small group mentoring, breakfast mentoring. There are different ways that we can go about doing the mentoring within schools. We also have a fantastic foster grandparents group that comes in to our schools every day. So essentially, that's why we are here. Did you have anything you wanted to add, Linda?
I just wanted to say, we do have a very lofty goal. We graduated 600, and we're bringing them back in right now at the pre-K and kindergarten level, or kids who are coming to us from other countries. Our schools are a wonderful place to be, and unfortunately, the good things aren't what's put in the paper. It's all of the negative. So we need our community to come in and see that and be able to spread that message that we're out here caring for our kids. We have some amazing students who have experienced some wonderful things that they're teaching us about, and we have some other kids who don't get those experiences, and that's where our mentors come in. They can say, hey, you know, I did this. I went here. We have kids who've never seen the beach, and we live 50 minutes away. So offering them that extra perspective of somebody who's not here to discipline them, somebody who's not here to counsel them. They're just there to be an extra supportive person. So that's what we're asking for, and so if you can spread our message wherever you are, we would just really appreciate that.
We appreciate you coming in today. I think mentoring is probably one of the, one of the best programs we could have in Waukesha County to help with education, because you're talking about helping to educate the kids, not only educating them, but I think it adds emotional stability, it adds social stability. There's so many facets of this that have benefits, and the fact that your numbers have increased the way they have since September of '23, I think that's phenomenal. So I'm really glad to see that. Ms. Hurley, I'm not sure, and I don't want to put you on the spot, but I know we had passed some legislation recently as far as people, as far as time off for individuals in reference to, I believe, helping at the polls or judges at the polls.
Yeah.
Any processes that we currently have in Waukesha County that would allow some leniency towards employees that wanted to participate in the mentoring program?
I mean, just the recent legislation that was for, you know, to be an election judge. Outside of that, I'm not aware of anything. I mean, employees do have personal time that they could take and accrued time. I don't know if that's something that council wants to, you know.
Yeah, I wonder if we shouldn't approach that with the administration to see if we don't want to try to implement something to help motivate employees to participate in this program. I think it'd be, that's what we're all about. I mean, my God, you know, such a huge amount of our budget goes to education, Dr. Stoffer.
And we appreciate every nickel.
What I'm saying is, we have a huge investment as a government body in education for this community. I think it'd be a small gesture to try to see what we could do to help our employees again buy into that and enhance your program 100%.
That'd be amazing, and very much appreciated.
Yeah, it'd be nice to see if you could make it happen.
Are we able to get, because I'm sure a lot of people don't know about this in the county. Are we able to get an all-county email sent out with?
I would be, I would be more than happy to do that. I can include all of our literature with the subject of the Mentor Guide, because that goes to actually our trained mentors, but applications for student mentees that are in English, Spanish, and Haitian Creole, and also, you know, literature on basically whatever I have for you, I can, I could certainly get to the, to the council.
I have a question. This is one reason why I wouldn't be a mentor under this particular setting, because it said all contacts with mentees is restricted to school.
Right.
And the next thing, on the next page, it says, improve, why become a mentee, mentor? Improve the relationships with teachers, parents, and their peers. So to me, I look at, I'm a holistic person, that we're going to mentor the child in school, but how do we, after the child gets good mentoring in the school, how do we mentor the parent? How do you contact the parent to show the achievements and what they need to do to continue on what they've learned from the mentor? You see what I'm saying?
Absolutely, and the version that you're reading right now is about two years old, and we were actually revamping the whole mentoring guide to reflect that the mentoring program, the Waukesha Mentoring Project as it exists right now, only oversees the mentoring project within the schools. If you have a fantastic relationship with a student and their family, and you want to pursue that outside of school, you're allowed to do that as well, as long, as long as, as long as you're working with the parent. We're not.
That's what I'm saying, yeah, okay.
So the way, the way it's worded, Ms. Shields, you're absolutely correct.
Okay.
And just to add, each of our students, before they participate in mentoring, their parent completes a permission slip, and in that permission slip, it allows for the school to release information to you regarding that student and how they're performing in school, and some of their conduct information and stuff. So when we offer that permission slip to parents, we encourage that. Get to know your child's mentor. This is somebody who we want to become a part of your village.
Good, good. That's good to hear.
Any other questions? Well, again, thank you very much, and we look forward to you sending out.
Thank you for your time today.
If you have the word documents and the PDFs, that would be great.
Yes, absolutely. Who would I send that to?
Ms. Hurley.
Ms. Hurley, okay, thank you very much.
You can find the email online, Waukesha County, and then she could, that would make it easier for us to disseminate the information throughout the county.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Good seeing you.
Thank you.
Thank you both again. I know my, rest of my team will come up at this point so that we can move on. I believe the council was interested in hearing about the annual report on child well-being. So we'll certainly give you a little bit of information on that, and if you have any questions, please feel free to chime in as well. But I'll turn it over to Mrs. Miles.
Hello, everyone. Good to see you today. Thank you for the opportunity to be with you and to share a little bit of information. So the article that referenced the children's well-being, 2024 Kids Count data book, that's actually prepared, and you may already know this, but I'm just sharing it for background, by the Annie E. Casey Foundation. And each state has the opportunity to have representation and participation in the sharing of data and the development of the report. And for Maryland, there is a gentleman through the Maryland Center of Economic Policy who is the point of contact, the sharer. So he would be the person who gathers and moves forward that information. There are specific areas within the Kids Count data book that are focused, and this is for those who may not be aware. It's basically a national review and ranking of where states stand in different areas. One of the areas is education, and the report is looking at data from '22-'23. And their focus nationally was fourth grade reading proficiency, and they also had an area that focused on eighth grade math. Full disclosure, I am oversimplifying what's in the report. This is quite a hefty document with amazing information, so I'm just giving a summary. Our role in reading that was to say, where do we, okay, this is where Maryland stands. Where is Waukesha County, and what are we doing, and how are we addressing? So that'll come to light in just a little bit. Another area, chronic absenteeism. The report notes that in '22-'23, one-third of the students across the nation were chronically absent. And to be chronically absent, you have to be absent at least in, or more than 10%. Now, that includes excused or lawful and unexcused or unlawful. So any child absent, excused, or unexcused, greater than 10% is chronically absent. You heard Linda and James referencing their role as PPW, that one of their focus areas is attendance. We have a lot of efforts, a lot of energy, and a lot of people working in that area with our students and our families. Another area that was highlighted as a recommendation in this report, and I'm so excited about this, is the area of community schools. Community schools are somewhat new to Maryland, maybe not new nationally, but new to Maryland. As of the day we are seated here, 23 of our 24 schools have been identified as community schools. And that is based on an equation of factors, including and mostly focusing on the free and reduced meals and measures such as that. Don't worry, our 24th school is not left out of anything, because they are a community-based school that's very close to their, it's a high school, Maradella High School, and their elementary schools are right there with them. So everything that is offered to the other 23 is offered to the 24th school. Who knows, they may add the list next year. What is beneficial to us is the available guidance and dollars that assist us. They don't cover everything, but we use them very wisely, and we're able to increase our numbers of people personnel workers, such as James and Linda, who you just had before you. We have one in every school, working with the families, the students, the truancy reduction program, all the resources that are needed to get the students in school so that their attendance increases, so they're not chronically absent, so that they're there for more instruction, so that the fourth grade reading proficiency and the eighth grade math are continuing to increase. In summary, there were three recommendations, three major recommendations that came from this 2024 Kids Count data. One was chronicling, chronicling, sorry, the absenteeism data by grade level. Rest assured, we're already doing it. We look at attendance data on a very regular basis. Actually, I am among a team of about five people. We get an attendance report every single day. And we know by school what the attendance, the absentee rate was. Then we have our PPWs who are working with the school administration and the homeschool liaisons on regular, specific, focused communication. Your child's absent three days, this is what happens. There's a phone call, there's a letter, there's a visit. So we have a lot going on there. The second recommendation was to establish a culture to pursue evidence-based solutions. James didn't even know I was going to say that one, but he already said that there were research-based sources and resources behind the benefits of mentoring. That's just one example. What we're doing is based in research, and it's based in good, positive support and effort for our students. And the third recommendation that was highlighted in this article that you had shared was incorporating intensive in-person tutoring. I would never take the spotlight from Dr. Briggs. I know he has a lot of information about that, but I will say in summary that we have tutoring available to all of our students, some of it in school, some of it after school, in-person, supportive. We have a lot of things in place going the right direction to make the continued positive growth that we know needs to happen every single year. Even when things are awesome, they can be a little bit more awesome, and that's what we strive for. So there's a lot going into it, and thank you again for sharing the article and for highlighting, not only though it focused on Maryland, but giving us a chance to highlight what's happening here, because we want that growth to continue and that improvement to be ongoing. Absolutely.
The only thing I would add, Ms. Miles referenced proficiency data, student proficiency data. So I wanted to invite the council and any community members to our August 13th board meeting, where we're going to be doing a data dive into both the state assessments from this past year and some of our local assessments, and we'll be sharing some targets for the upcoming school year as well. So for more, stay tuned for more information, but if you can either tune in or even attend in person, that's an afternoon board meeting at 1:30. So the council and the community are welcome.
Location for the public?
That would be at the Long Avenue, Waukesha County Board of Education Building.
Any questions on the child well-being report?
On the second page, it says that there's $837.6 million available. Have we applied for any of that money? It's supposed to be a recommendation reported from the elementary and secondary emergency relief, also known as ESSER, have until September 30th to apply for any unused pandemic.
Certainly will defer to Dr. Rager for the specifics, but basically that is the CARES, S R, money that you've heard us reference.
And I saw that was available.
That's a national dollar amount that they're expecting to be available, so I just, I didn't know if maybe you had it in your back pocket for Waukesha County.
They said Maryland's available amount left is $837 million.
We have spent all that's been allocated to us, or will have been spent out by the end of August, which was the initial deadline. They have extensions for folks who haven't spent it all out, but to my knowledge, we have exhausted or will be exhausting all the funds available to us.
Any other questions?
The August 13th meeting. Former President Shawnee, the NDLACP, had made a really good comment here about the proficiency at third-grade levels, which I think everybody understands that's the point to make or break. I think Judge Masarala has also stressed that in many of the talks he's had within the community. Will that, will there be some type of a report?
Yes, sir. We'll be, we'll be speaking about various grade levels, but we will specifically be talking about that third-grade reading level. The state currently has posted a, MSD has posted a draft policy, a draft literacy policy, where they're actually talking about possible retention of third-grade students who haven't met their proficiency target. So it's definitely a lot of conversation across the state right now, and we'll be sharing some of that data, our local data on the 13th.
Good information, thank you. So as we go into the next part, I also want to mention that we do have Mrs. Liesel Ashby, our Director of Facilities Planning and Construction, as well as our Director of Finance and Comptroller, Jessie Reed, with us as well. If you have questions regarding this next part, but I wanted to start at least by, again, reiterating our thanks to the county council, and appreciation for the additional support that we received in this budget session. The $1 million over maintenance of effort has already been incorporated into our budget. We'll be able to bring on staff, more multilingual learner teachers, as well as assist. We'll be able to bring on staff, more multilingual learner teachers, as well as assist with middle school climate, which is a big initiative of ours, by taking some of the responsibilities regarding attendance, regarding testing, off of our administrators who are doing that responsibility before, and allow them to be able to focus on climate and student discipline in the middle school level. And then also looking at additional positions for elementary schools regarding class size. We have experienced at times and pretty consistent extraordinary growth, especially with our multilingual learners enrolling in our schools, and that is sometimes very quick growth that occurs during the first, the weeks leading up to school starting and those first couple of weeks of school. So, sometimes we have to adjust very quickly, and because of our class sizes, especially in our elementary schools and in our earliest grades, that's gonna be able to provide us with the staff to be flexible, to be able to help with that. Also, with the one-time funding, if you've not been by Glen Avenue recently, I would encourage you to go by Glen Avenue Elementary. You'll see that one-time funding, that $1 million above, with the one-time funding going towards that project there at Glen Avenue. The parking lot is being completely redone, and as well as we'll be able to complete a project in the back of the school in one of the back wings, to be able to sprinkler that and be able to add some doors and closures to make that, that area safer for our students and much more doable for learning and instruction. So, we appreciate that. And then, with that said, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Rager so he can talk about capital projects, specifically Mardele and Fruitland Primary.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Afternoon.
If you've been by Mardele, there have been some changes over the last few months as in the spring, we wrapped up Phase Three, and so we were able to move students from the portables into new classrooms, primarily middle school classrooms at the front of the building, if you're facing it from the street, off to the left side. We removed some of the portables, and that'll free up space to begin work on parking lots. We left one portable building that has some classrooms and some office space in it, and we've moved into Phase Four, which is the final phase of construction. If you're facing the building from the street, that's the front of the building from the new section that was Phase Three, all the way down to the gym. That will be completed in about the next 12 months. We look forward to that project wrapping up about a year from now. For the upcoming school year, almost all of our classes will be in new classrooms in the building, with the exception of those few out in that portable. And of course, with 24 schools, it's about a three-year cycle. When one wraps up, we're ready to start another one. And Fruitland Primary, again, thanks to your support this year with the capital funding. We're moving forward with that. We're reaching a major milestone now. Mr. Cannon was at the last School Building Commission where we had a presentation on the design development documents. That was presented to the board in a work session this morning. We look forward to the board approving that at the July 30th meeting, and then that will be submitted to the state for their approval, and we can continue moving towards the construction documents, which will be the next phase. Also, please report with Fruitland Primary, through hard work of Liesel and her team, we got a gross area baseline variance, which is giving us another 4,000 square feet that the state is going to participate in funding. It's not 4,000 additional square feet to the building, but it's additional money from the state that will then in turn be less money having to come from the county for that portion of the construction.
And I'm ready for any questions you might have.
It's good to see tangible progress, that is good to see. Yeah, we appreciate that.
Do you think Fruitland will start?
We're hoping to start second quarter next year. I'll turn to the Liesel, make sure. Yeah, we're always at the mercy of.
She always has to slip that in, right?
Instruction's not free.
No.
We proved something today.
Yeah, I saw it.
There's a whole page and a half spreadsheet of summer projects that are being completed right now in our schools, but the most notable that you can see from the road would obviously be Mardele. Glen Avenue is a really big one. Y-High and Parkside Roof projects are ongoing, HVAC at Y-High as well. So, that's exciting to see, and we appreciate the support.
So, just real quick, just so that, I guess, I took the tour of Fruitland, and so the public understands the existing school would stay where it's at, the new school would be behind it, and then the, what would be the former school would be torn down?
Right, that would be parking for, once the project's completed.
And the square footage is, we're going from 53,000 to 90,000 square feet?
I don't really understand, it's 106.
106, okay.
We'll have more space, more.
Lot more space.
Yeah.
And there was, there's an exception to expansion, wasn't there?
We, when we design buildings, we usually build them with a plan to, in the future, should we need to add on to the school and/or add portables, just a plan of where those might be, and be prepared with.
Okay. I went through there, I think the health office was slightly larger than a broom closet. Yeah, good, good move.
I think, and also, we saw this morning at a work session that the traffic flow will be much improved with the new building as well. There'll be a separate visitor and student drop-off area out front, and then there will be a separate bus area in the back on North Brown.
Any other questions?
All right, thank you. So, just to wrap things up, I wanted to highlight a few things regarding the priorities for our next school year. So, the council's well aware of the direction that the school system is moving. We do have five priorities. They are school climate and safety, student achievement, opportunities for student engagement, high-performing workforce, and parent and community involvement. Those are our five priorities, and what we plan around each and every day, what our budget is planned around and aligned with, and what our long-term goals are aligned with as well. As we move forward for school climate and safety, the old Tiny Todd Whelk next to East Salisbury has been transformed into what we call early learning transitions. And this is a student behavior program for our earliest learners, pre-K and kindergarten last year, and then we're able to now expand that to pre-K through second grade for this coming year. We recognize, when we really started drilling down into the data, that the most aggressive behavior and the largest percentages of some of our violent behavior was actually occurring in our youngest grade levels. So, we're excited by adding these intervention programs into our elementary schools, as well as into our middle schools and high schools with the funding that we've received that last year, our office referrals decreased by 10% overall as a school system. In middle school, they decreased by 27%, and in high school, they decreased by 48%. So, that does tell you that our area of focus is that elementary, because that's where we've seen those increases, and that's where we see a lot of our students that are coming to us, that are new to us, many times from unstructured settings, and that's where this early learning transition program will really help our students. We've also been in a lot of conversation with Kennedy Krieger and the Benedict Keane School, and while there's nothing in writing as of yet, I feel really strongly that between the next one to three years, we will have substantially more special education, student mental and behavioral health resources down here on the lower shore. That's been a very strong push. I want to thank the Greater Salisbury Committee, Mike Dunn, the Healthy Minds for Shore Initiative through that entity that's really helped push this forward. Mary Beth Carosa has been instrumental in this as well, and we've had a ton of conversations, site visits across the state. They've been down here to visit with us as well. Maple Shade has been a part of those conversations, so that's been very helpful for us.
Anything we can do to help with that?
Yeah, I appreciate that, and that does bring up a good point. At some point, I'm sure we'll come to you for a letter of support, at least at a minimum in the near future. We've been able to advertise and bring on board this coming year what we're calling middle school assessment and achievement facilitators. I had mentioned before, there's so much needed, but also required attendance intervention from the state, as well as the testing that comes from the state that really tied up almost exclusively a full administrator in each one of our middle schools up to now. This will be sort of like a test coordinator at the middle school level like we have at the high school level, as well as helping with that attendance intervention, working with the plans for that, to be able to take that responsibility off of our middle school administration, which will enable them to really get into the hallways and the classrooms, which is where they need to be. So, we're excited about that. We're also excited about bringing on board some school safety managers, title yet to be determined. Campus security managers, thank you very much. I have it from good authority that we will have two additional school resource officers at some point this coming fall. In addition to that, we're hiring several campus security managers, which will be a similar to our campus patrol, but at a higher level of salary and also a higher level of responsibility that will enable us to be able to really have some personnel in our school that will work very closely with school resource officers, and also align with schools that may not have that school resource officer to be able to do some patrols and things like that. So, we're excited about that for this coming fall. Student achievement, very briefly, I'll just talk about the fact that we have absorbed in the last year alone about 300-plus additional multilingual learner students into our school system, just in the last year alone. So, we are working to be able to provide with that additional funding from the county to be able to provide staffing to accommodate for those students, as well as we are pleased to announce that the Judy Center will be expanding in the next year to both Chipman Elementary and West Salisbury Elementary, in addition to Beaver Run and Pemberton, where it's currently located. So, that'll now be four elementary schools that'll really benefit from that, kind of that birth-through-five feeder pattern into those elementary schools. We've been continuing to work with Salisbury University in Warwick. Our dual enrollment numbers have increased by 20% just in the last year for our high school students.
Can you say why you think that's happening?
Well, because it's free.
We're paying.
Under blueprint, we're now paying for the tuition, the books, and the fees for students to be able to participate in dual enrollment.
Does that include, is this the same group who would have been paying for it before? Are we, is this reaching out to a new group of folks who probably wouldn't have gone to higher education?
I think it's tapped into an expanded group, because before it was only those who could afford it. So, I definitely think we've expanded our reach, which is obviously beneficial to all students.
And I think that's supported, as we look at our AP, Advanced Placement courses, that enrollment has sustained as well. So, I would, I would agree with that 100%, where our AP numbers are still high, and these new numbers are really just increased numbers of students participating in that dual enrollment program. We're adding three new after-school programs to bring that number to 17 schools, having an after-school program for next year. And I'm pleased to announce that the class of 2024, I know the council as well as our board always likes this number, but the class of 2024 earned $21 million in college scholarships. So, that's really exciting and phenomenal, I think, to hear. Student engagement, as you know, we were able to eliminate all participation fees last year. We'll continue with that this year for sports, music, clubs, any participation fees we've waived for all grade levels, and that's increased our participation in those programs substantially. We had six middle school sports that we started last year, and we'll be continuing with that. We've seen a marked increase, I think part of that 27% decrease in offenses for violent behaviors in our middle schools is really attributed in large part probably to participation in these expanded programs that we're now able to offer. We're also increasing our CTE enrollment. We've added another pre-engineering class, and we're also adding for this year a firefighter EMT CTE course in conjunction with the Salisbury Fire Department, and our volunteer fire departments have all worked with us to collaborate on building that program starting this fall.
That's really good.
We're adding two new signature middle school programs to the one that we have, which is the Next Gen STEM Program at Salisbury Middle School. We're now adding a communications and media program at Bennett Middle School, and we're also adding a young business leaders program at Wycomico Middle School that'll be serving our middle school students and engaging them. High-performing workforce, we were able to sign our negotiated agreements with a step and a one and a quarter percent raise for next year. I think a big win for us, that's helping with the diversity of our staff. We've grown our diversity and minority staff coming on board with us by 15%, and that's in large part attributed to our Grow Your Own initiative, where we're helping to provide time, speaking of time for mentors, but we're providing time for our instructional assistants to be able to become teachers, as well as the tuition, covering the tuition for them to go back to school to be certified. We do have a pretty high percentage minority workforce in our instructional assistants and also our support staff, so it just makes sense to be able to continue to put our time and energy and funding into that staff to get them certified to move into the classroom. So, that's helped us substantially as well. And then the last thing I'll just talk about briefly is our parent, and I also want to mention, thank you, Dr. Rager, that we're very excited regarding our high-performing workforce, that next month, we're opening the Marathon Health Center for Wycomico County Public Schools staff and their families. And my understanding is?
You approved that as well for county employees? They come along another month or so after it opens for us?
Yes. So, we think that's gonna be a great recruitment tool for not only us, but hopefully for county employees as well. It'll really reduce healthcare costs for a large portion of our workforce, as well as yours. So, we're grateful for that.
I think you all thought of it first.
Yeah, we did. But we extended the invitation and you accepted, so that's good news for all of us, and actually, financially, it'll continue to help us with that addition of those other employees as well. So, it'll bring down our costs to cover that up just a little bit more.
In case anybody's listening that might be thinking of becoming a teacher, can you elaborate on that program?
Sure, I have Dr. Rager actually do that.
So, we've contracted with Marathon Health to open the health clinic. It'll be on the S-curve in the space that was formerly, I believe, a women's health center, and it will be free to all employees who are on our insurance, as well as their dependents age three and above, and retirees prior to Medicare. And they can visit the health center at no cost for any kind of appointments, whether it's a physical, whether it's a need for some small-scale emergency care. Usually, they advertise it as same day, next day, so we're not a long wait. Get a little more time with the provider, about twice the amount of time is what you expect in a traditional provider's office, and they're not pushing to do, they're not tied in with a larger network, so you're not looking at getting a lot of referrals, and they can handle some of the referrals even in-house via telehealth. One of the other, one of the other things we're excited about is it has in-house labs, so if you need labs done, they can take care of that in-house, again, at no cost to the employee, as well as in-house pharmacy services. So, it was about a list of about 300 formulary prescription drugs that employees can get at no cost, no copay. And they can even take advantage of that if they still want to go to their doctor, that they have a relationship, that's perfectly fine, we're not forcing this on anyone, but you can go to your doctor, get a prescription, and bring that over to the Marathon Health Clinic. If it's on that formulary list, get it filled at no cost. So again, it's totally optional program for employees, but it is to their benefit because all the services are at no cost. And also looking at having a, a mental health component as well.
And when employers are probably, probably just like you, when you're paying 70 to 80% of the overall healthcare costs of that benefit for the employee, being a part of this really reduces the number of visits to the emergency room and other things. So it will overall bring our healthcare costs down by being able to provide this. So we're excited about that. It's not only a money saver for our staff, but it's really a money saver for the employer as well. And then the last few things I'll say is regarding parent community involvement. As Mrs. Miles mentioned earlier, we're expanding to 23. Out of 24 of our schools will be community schools this coming year, but the exciting part of that is what that means. We've been able to expand to working now with 47 community agencies around our area in our school system and 21 faith-based partnerships. Just to name a couple of things out of very many that that's going to be able to provide us. We've also increased the participation in our special education community advisory group this year. We'll continue to do that into next year. We have career coaches, which was provided to us under, from the state requirement under Blueprint. But these career coaches have also been able to really link with local businesses and industry here in, in our area to, to bring them into our schools and for our students to, to be able to see all of the different career options that are out there here in our, in our local area. And then we're just really proud where we had B. Gotem is one of our incoming seniors at Parkside. He will be a member of the State Board of Education, the only student member on the State Board of Education. And he will be representing 900,000 Maryland students in, in that position. In the last two of the three years, the student member of the State Board of Education has come from Wycomico County. So that's something that we're very proud of as well. So I always put this plug in at the end. But we have placed in the top three in the entire state for our maintenance inspections. Again, this coming, this past year, our planning and construction team, as you know, is second to none. And you can just drive around and see all the wonderful work that they are doing with the funding that we're receiving from the, the county, as well as the state. Our finance audit came back clean again this year, so Jesse Reed and his team are doing a fantastic job there. So those are our initiatives, and we appreciate the support and the funding that we receive from the County Council. And I hope that you can see it's going a long way, and we're accomplishing some, some really great things and making some, some strides forward. So I'm excited.
Thank you. Any questions from anyone? Joe?
There's been on the news lately, I'll address this to Mr. Malone, about cellphone usage, restricting cellphone usage in, in schools. I think it was at Smyrna or somewhere, actually. What's going on with the board in that? Are they doing any work with that right now?
We talk about it among ourselves, and we've talked about it numerous times. It is Smyrna School District, and what they do is buy these pockets, I'm not sure what they're called. But we've talked about it among ourselves, but pricing that out, it's about a quarter of a million dollars to get enough of those pockets for them to put their cellphones in.
They can just put them in their pocket. I mean, you don't have to spend a quarter million dollars for them to put their phone away.
Well, that's the problem now. They have their phones on them and they, they don't put them away.
You can turn them, make them turn them off.
But that's what we do.
That's what we do.
And there's discipline issues if they don't follow that. But what these school systems are doing is going to a system where you may come in a room and you put it in a pocket, so then there's no way they can turn them on or take them out.
So that's what the Delaware initiative is that you referenced.
Yeah. So what, what's the penalty now if you have them, you'd take them away from them if they go off in the classroom?
I was going to say, and I can ask Mrs. Miles, Mrs. Miles in just a moment, but I will commend the board because really they were ahead of the curve in some respects, because last summer, we really spent some time on our code of conduct. And one of the things that the board approved was us increasing the consequences and penalties for cellphone violations in school. So it does start off as, you know, a warning, turn them off, that kind of thing. And that can quickly move into disruption to class or even into insubordination, which would ultimately be a suspension out of.
I mean, do you confiscate the phones now? Well, school's not in session right now, but I mean, have you confiscated the phones if they don't? If they don't abide by the rules?
What the teachers do is make sure that they keep them away. If they're not, if they're not going to keep them away, then they're removed from that instructional setting, and then the consequences go from there.
I mean, all the research is students do better without the cellphones, and that's why these school systems are looking into putting them away when they come in there. Then the teacher doesn't have to deal with that as part of the discipline of the class either.
Name the one, number one distraction right now.
No question, no question.
Just because it was mentioned on that note, you know, the, I, two months ago, I was reading, I finished The Anxious Generation by Jonathan Haidt, that book. But he really talked a whole lot about going from the play-based childhood, which all of us grew up in a play-based childhood, to now the phone-based childhood. About really stressing how important it is to have unstructured play. They said that you're either going to have unstructured play outside in recess, or you're going to do it in the hallways or in the classroom. So pick your, pick which one you want to do. So I guess hopefully, I don't, I don't look to, to random authors to tell me about education policy. I look to you all to figure that out and to know what's best. But I'm sure that's part of your calculus, and I'm, what, I don't know how that's evolving. But I think after listening to it and pondering enough on what he's been said and what, what his data's come out, I hope we continue to move in more of that direction.
Thank you.
Mrs. Hurley, if you could put the August thirteenth, 1:30 board meeting in our calendars, we appreciate that. So.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We really appreciate it. It's always, always productive and thanks for the great work.
Thank you all.
A nickel's, did you say nickels?
So we appreciate every nickel. That's bankers all.
See you guys. Entertaining motion to adjourn.
Don't move, don't move.